All right, so I had pressure, Councilman Coyle, Councilmember Deal, Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Ship Freeman.
Present, yeah.
Oh, Councilmember Joshi. I had a quick notice that this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, has been provided by an annual notice sent to the home news, Tribune and Star Ledger and the Sentinel, the New India Times on December 13th, 2019, and post the main lobby municipal complex on that scene D.
Okay, so tonight we have scheduled for only for 10 minutes, not to, oh, that's just their past. We, I'd like to introduce Charlie Crabattill, and he will discuss to you about the clean energy initiative. He wants to discuss that, so I wait, we're waiting for his presentation at this time. Thank you. Go ahead, Charlie.
Good evening, Madam Council President, members of the council. It's a real honor and a pleasure to be able to present to you tonight about our community choice aggregation initiative that is before you. I'm just gonna share my screen and got a few slides to show you, and then I'm happy to take any questions you have, and I will keep it to the 10 minutes. Thank you again for your time. So, we'll start with the basics currently. Of the electricity generated in New Jersey, only 5% of it comes from renewables, but we are part of an electric grid called the PJM Grid, and there is a state legislation from Article 3 that enables towns to purchase electricity in bulk. And there's two benefits to doing that. One is, of course, cost savings, just like when you buy anything in bulk, there's an electricity market and you can get better prices, especially a large town like Edison. And the other advantage is that you can set standards for what percentage of your electricity comes from renewables and help accelerate the transition to clean energy, which is something we really need right now. We'll get into that in a bit. From the consumer perspective, the residents of your community virtually notice almost no difference at all. The incumbent utility, PSENG, would still do the billing, they would still do the meter reading, they would still maintain the transmission of the electricity, meaning the wires and all that stuff. And ultimately, the only difference would be on the bill, there would be a, potentially a different source of the electricity that might well have a lower price for your residents, and that would be really the only difference, would be the amount. And I speak from experience, we did launch a very similar program two years ago in New Brunswick where I live, and it's working out very well. We achieved very significant savings, I'll get to that in a moment. The nice thing about our ordinance is the way it's written, it does phase in, phase up to 100% renewable energy by 2030. It starts at 50%, which just, you know, for the record, would still be more than twice the amount that you're currently getting through PSENG. The portfolio standards currently call for 21% renewables as the minimum in New Jersey. This would be a way to right off the bat, start purchasing 50% renewables and ramp up over the decade to get to 100%. Why 100% by 2030? Well, I think we need to do this. The big reason is, of course, the climate crisis. New Jersey stands to lose a lot to damage, especially our coastal communities. Rapid greenhouse gas reductions are needed in order to avert serious disasters and worse flooding, extreme weather, the types of things that we are starting to see as a result of the climate crisis. And also, we, we do have, you know, some of the most polluted air in the United States as it is, so part of the reason for that is the electricity that we're consuming to, you know, in our homes, as well as many other sources, but a big source is the electricity that we use in our homes, and this is one way to transition and accelerate the transition to clean energy to address the climate crisis and also the air quality issues. Middlesex County did get an F rating from the American Lung Association for ozone pollution, so this is one way to combat that, as well as the obvious problems of climate change. And the nice thing is, it's a pretty straightforward process to implement a community choice aggregation program. It's just essentially a bidding process, like you must do all the time in the township to, you know, have a competitive bidding process and award the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. It's no different than purchasing other products. And ultimately, your residents can get lower prices on their electricity, and the really nice thing about this program is it's not a mandate, it's just another option for consumers. There's no, you know, you don't lose the option to keep the PSENG at the current price they're offering, you don't lose the option to go with any other third-party energy supplier, you just conduct a bidding process to try to get the best possible price for your residents, and it's just one more option they have once the program gets implemented. And, so, yeah, I'll, I'll just finish by telling you about my town here in New Brunswick. We've got our program now in its second year, and we actually have two options within the program. The default is to purchase 50% renewable energy for your home, and you can see the price for that, about 12 and a half cents per kilowatt hour. And so, once the program was implemented, the vast majority of electricity customers in New Brunswick were enrolled in that. You always have the option to opt out and go with any other provider you want, but you can see why folks wouldn't want to go back to PSENG in our town, because the savings is significant. We're looking at right now 14% savings. PSENG switched to a bifurcated rate, so they charge a little more. Once you hit 600 kilowatt hours, they charge for the excess a greater rate. So, we're basically, we're saving 14% versus what every other resident of the PSENG territory's paying for the first 600 kilowatt hours, and above 600 kilowatt hours, we're actually saving 19% on our electric supply. And the really great thing is, through the contract we were able to award to a supplier, they offered an additional option of 100% renewable energy. So, for folks who are eager to do their part to move us forward in this clean energy revolution, if they're willing to pay a little bit more to go to 100% right away instead of waiting a decade, they can do that, and you'll see, they are actually saving still versus what they would be paying if the city had done nothing and implemented no aggregation program. So, it is a very significant savings for us, as well as a big boost in the percentage of renewable energy that we're using. And the, probably the best part is, we did not have to make any investments of new infrastructure, no one had to install solar panels on their homes, or we didn't have to build solar fields or wind turbines in New Brunswick. This was electricity that's already being produced on the very same grid that we're already on. It's just a way for us to accelerate the transition and purchase an increasing amount of renewable energy, and at the same time, offer a product that saves costs and doesn't make any major changes to the, to the process by which people are, you know, getting their electricity currently. So, we think that this is a win for Edison, we hope that you will vote yes for this when it does come before you. The ordinance is one that's working out very well for us in New Brunswick, it's also working out in Piscataway where we helped champion that, and you saw some of the other towns on the screen that have, you know, implemented successful community choice aggregation programs. And we hope that you will help lead the way and make Edison a leader when it comes to bringing forth this, this clean energy revolution that we need. And I hope I didn't exceed my time, but I do want to thank you again for the opportunity, and I do want to ask if you have any concerns at all that I can address, or even better, if you'd like to voice your support for the program, I'd love to hear that too, and I am available to take any questions at this time. I'll stop sharing my screen and...
Any tankers?
Yeah, to Council President, you know, thank you, Charlie, for giving a nice presentation here. I'm a big believer of the clean energy. We did pass some of the resolution that food and water had asked us to improve, like the fossil energy, and I will be more than happy to support this wonderful idea, you know, and hopefully will be able to roll this in Edison Township. And thank you, proud of your work.
Thanks kindly.
Council President.
Councilman Barisha.
Charlie, so to sum this up in a nutshell here for you, you're proposing that we go with clean energy, and it's going to reduce our costs overall.
It has been a win-win in every community that's done it so far. We, you saw the savings we're getting here in New Brunswick, even, even if you jump to 100%, we're still seeing savings versus doing nothing. Yeah, it is, it is a way to do both, to save your residents money on their power bills in a time when, you know, a lot of folks are going through economic difficulties, and it's also a chance to urgently help us move forward the clean energy future that we need to survive and protect our future.
Okay, a win-win is always a win in my book, and you have my support on that.
Thank you, sir.
Council President.
Councilmember Deal.
Charlie, thank you for that very professional presentation. It is certainly something we need to look at and consider. It's not easy doing a presentation in 10 minutes, so I applaud you for putting it together as neatly as you have, and I know that what we will be doing is getting in contact with you and talking a little bit more about it, but thank you, sir.
Terrific, yeah, I'll follow up with an email to everyone on the council, so you have my contact info, and I'm happy to talk more offline.
Council President.
Councilmember Gomez.
Charlie, thank you again for the presentation, and I think many of us, the council have over the years tried to put focus and move in, in a direction that benefits the environment, benefits the town. But if you can just clear up for me a little bit more how it would work from a provider perspective, how the energy would be purchased, and for those that are current PSENG customers, how will that flow actually occur?
Yeah, so, again, there would be a bidding process the town would conduct, and you would award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder, and this would be similar to any PSENG customer can currently go out to any third-party supplier and choose to pick them. The advantage to doing it this way is, is you actually get to leverage the buying power of all 100,000 residents, instead of every consumer being, being on their own. So, this is a way that, you know, basically, PSENG would get the, get the word that the new energy supplier is such-and-such, whoever it is, and then they would begin sourcing the energy through there. The bill would reflect, it would still look like a regular PSENG bill, it's just the section for electricity supply would, you know, identify the supplier and that, that, that superior price. So, we would, you know, expect very little, you know, very few of your residents will notice it, but for the communications the township's required to do, 30 programs, and they might notify the customers that this is, you know, the new option, and if they want to opt out, they can opt out at any time. Residential customers would be by default opted in, but again, could opt out at any time and always switch to a third-party provider, or just the regular PSENG. They're like, commercial, you know, businesses in town would by default be opted out, but they would also have it at their, you know, at their wish, whenever they want to enroll, they can enroll. And if you do want to look at just an example, you could go to RenewableNVforNewBrunswick.com, and you could see, you know, how the website works, pretty simple, you can opt in, you can opt out, and you can, what we call opt up, which would be to go up to that 100% option. But it's all pretty straightforward, you just, you know, the number that's on your PSENG bill and your basic information, you type that in, and you can enroll or de-enroll at any time from the program. So, it would be just a nice little other option that your, your residents would enjoy.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, one of the things that we encounter in the past when exploring these options were residents not wanting to change providers just really for the purpose of, that's something, somebody else that I gotta work with, or somebody else that's gonna be different. So, thank you for making the distinction that for everybody that's listening, it's still gonna be funneled through PSENG is just the way that the energy was purchased. So, just wanted to make sure that every, anybody that's listening got that cleared up, so, thank you.
My pleasure.
Charlie, question I wanted to ask you. It's strange to me, but it's in certain parts of Edison. Certain parts of Edison, you purchase Elizabeth Town gas, and then you purchase PSENG, but you only purchased the PSE, but it still says PSENG. So, how is this gonna work for the people, it's the way it's laid out?
That's a, that's a great...
That's only for, I mean...
Yeah, it's, I neglected to mention that this does not affect the gas service at all, so if you're with Elizabeth Town, you're still with Elizabeth Town, if you're with the G of PSENG, you're still with them for that portion of your service, but this is only for the electricity. Basically, the bill has the gas supply, the gas transmission, and the electric supply and the electric transmission. This only affects the electric supply portion of the bill, and it's my understanding that the entire township gets their electricity from PSENG.
So, and so, how easy would it be for people who are not computer savvy to switch back and forth if they, if they feel like they're being lowballed in the beginning, and they feel like they're only making like a penny or two savings, and then they want to switch back? How would that work?
Yeah, if they're not interested in putting it on the web, there's, there's plenty of other options, including phone and email, and even, I believe, the initial mailing, there's a little thing you can fill out and mail back if you, if you do want to opt out. So, it's, it's pretty easy for, for folks who want to opt in or out, and, yeah, it's a pretty straightforward process, whichever...
Charlie, I got a couple of questions. I appreciate your presentation, I think, I think you did a terrific job with it. I support green energy and environmental efforts. My questions are the following. What is the third party that would be used then?
Yeah, so there's a, a number of third parties out there. You would, you know, hopefully spread the word and advertise your bidding documents, and, and you'd hopefully get multiple choices to choose from. If, for whatever reason, you're unsatisfied with the options you have, you can always rebid, you don't have to just take, take what the first process yields, but I would encourage you to look to New Brunswick and Piscataway, they both ended up with different suppliers, but they are enjoying savings regardless, and, and I don't, I don't even know all the players in the, in the market, but I do know that it's working out very well for us here in New Brunswick.
Okay, and what, do you know how many options there are approximately across the country or in this area?
That's a great question, I don't know, I could probably get you an answer on that, but I do know there are, there are...
Do you know the average time for these contracts that New Brun...
Yeah, great, the sort of going, you know, default in the industry is roughly 18 months. I think New Brunswick would get a 17-month contract, but almost 18 months, and it actually gives you more predictability for, you know, the rate payers than PSENG, 'cause PSENG can change their rates sometimes twice a year, and so that's what we saw in New Brunswick, was at first we were only saving about 6% versus PSENG, which is still nice, but PSENG recently hiked their rates in June, and we are now seeing that, you know, 14 to 19% savings because PSENG went up.
Now, you said the average contract is every 18 months. Say the city were to switch, does that mean that the consumers would have to then switch, like, who they're paying for? How would, how smooth is that transition?
It's, it's very smooth, 'cause as far as they're concerned, they're in the program, the program is just switching suppliers, so it would really not, you know, it would say a different thing on the bill, and, you know, obviously, the, you know, there might be a change in the rate, but the, you know, from their perspective, they don't have to do another enrollment process or another, anything like that.
Now, if you're already on an energy-saving program, this supersedes that, right?
As a matter of fact, no. If you already have a third-party provider and you're happy with them, the default for you is actually you stay with your current third-party provider, you just now have an additional option if you one day get fed up with them, or they increase their rates, and you want to switch to this, you can, but there's really two groups of residences that would not be defaulted in, and those are ones that already have solar panels, and that's kind of for a complicated reason, but, but they, it's usually best to leave them out of the initial program, they can still opt in if they want, but if you have solar panels, you're not going to be opted in by default, or if you're already, you know, deviated from PSENG and gone to a, a third-party provider, the default is that you remain with them, but you now have a new option.
Okay, can you send me the two contracts from New Brunswick and North Brunswick, you said?
New Brunswick and Piscataway, yes.
Piscataway, yeah.
We have on that, yes.
All right. And what happens if you fall behind on your bill? Where is the service, and I was told, what, what happens?
Good question. I believe that if you do fall behind, unless you set a payment plan, you do get sort of booted back to PSENG, but you can, you can always re-enroll.
So, if someone's late on their payment once, they would get kicked to PSENG?
It's, it's my understanding, if they, unless they, unless they set up a payment plan to, you know, to make it right, if, I think, if you go like two months in a row, then, then you'd be probably, probably sent back to PSENG.
Okay, so my questions are not as related to the cost, it's more so the service right now that I just want to iron out from the resident's perspective. All right, I still have other questions, but I will follow up with you afterwards.
Great.
Thanks.
Council President.
Councilmember Coyle. Councilmember Coyle.
Mr. Cradaville, good job. All of us have received a lot of support through the residents of Edison, including other environmentalists. I think you did a great job with your presentation. I look forward to supporting this, and if I have any other questions, I'll reach out to you. Thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you.
Charlie, what about the people that are on the budget plan already for PSENG?
On, on a payment plan, they would, they would be able to enroll. It's my understanding that, you know, so long as you're sort of in good standing, you can...
No, so, I'm saying, what if you're on a plan from PSENG right now, it's a budget plan?
When it gets...
This supersedes that, right?
I believe you would be defaulted in, but I'll double-check with the policy team on that one. But, yeah, I believe that, you know, so long as you're in good standing, you're, you're gonna join the, the program.
Okay.
And Charlie, the third party, does it offer programs such as PSENG, where programs that, say for instance, you need a hot water heater and stuff, they include it in your bill, and say for instance, your HVAC goes out, and you're already, you know, paying into PSENG, would the third party be that receptive to you for those different other items?
Great question. It's my belief that PSENG would still be down to do that stuff, because they're still providing your gas and providing the transmission of electricity, so I think you're still eligible for the appliance programs, but I'll double-check. Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, I think you're...
Oh, you're muted.
Okay, no, you have to stay in, when you, when you, stay in, if you go to the third party. Excuse me?
I didn't catch that last part, sorry.
When you opt in, when you switch over to the third party, how long do you have to stay in that?
Uh, you're, you're free to...
As a resident, as a resident?
You're free to go anytime, it's just something that, you know, takes until the next billing cycle. So, if you, if you're in it, you know, you're probably gonna be in it for, you know, the first month, and then, you know, you can, you could opt out right away, and by the time your next bill comes, you should be, you should be out.
But I don't see where, as, before six months go by, I don't see where you would see a savings, or you, you know, you wouldn't see anything, I don't think, until at least six months notice. That's just my opinion.
Sure, well, the, the rate is a fixed rate, so you'd be, you know, whatever the rate is, it would be in place right away, and it would remain the same for the 17, 18 months, year and a half, whereas the PSENG rate might be more variable, it might go, to be fair, might go up, might go down twice a year. So, you could see, you could see big savings right away.
All right, okay, well, you know, you could see them go down to PSENG, 'cause competition, I love competition, 'cause it usually brings the prices down of a lot of big things such as PSENG, Elizabeth Town gas, because you've never, the prices never go lower if there's one person, you know, if, if there's only one thing for you to bid differently on. So, that's one thing that's good about it, you know, I wish, you know, health insurance and other stuff would get like that, so, you know, like our car insurance and stuff, that you can be able to bid out different places, then we'd be in a much better place, that's what I see. I'm, I'm very environmental, but I'm, I'm very cautious of putting people places, because if I put them there myself, a lot of times I'd rather the people decide themselves what they really want, the, the whole group of the people. Because when you're making great, big changes, I don't, I don't feel right that I'll put you somewhere that you don't want to be. I just, that's, that's just how I feel about it, that's just me, at all, so. I like to get the general consensus of the town, because everybody likes cost-saving, but if my cost-saving, if I can't see it at that particular time or whatever, and then I go back and forth trying to move it around, then it does create a hardship for some people, see, because I know we got, I know we got new young people that's always ready to move, move back and forth along, but I also know you have a, an amount of people, I think, from like the 40 to maybe 75 in that range, and that's the people you mostly have to sell it to. We have to sell most of our ideas to that, to that group right there, 'cause that's the group, at all, prior to that, 'cause I know people under that, you know, let's, let's move, let's go, 'cause, you know, they do the stream TV and all that instead of doing the cable, you know what I mean? The group that's under that age group. So, what my position is, and as I said, I want to make sure we take care of the whole town, not just the people under 40, if you understand what I'm saying.
Really great to, to be able to go around Edison, so many people from different political persuasions and different age groups and different groups who support this kind of a, a, a ordinance, and, and so we're, we're hopeful that it'll have wide appeal like it does here in New Brunswick.
Okay, so, excuse me, I spoke to some people from Piscataway, and some of them were telling me about it, point-blank. Some of them was in it and some of them wasn't, but as I told you before, that I would do an honest canvas of the people themselves, because I know, no matter what it is, there's always gonna be some pros and there was gonna be some cons, and there always gonna be some people who actually are thrilled by certain things, and there actually are other people that are really, you know, they, they're not, you know, too happy about change, but that's just the human nature, at all. All right. All right, anyone else?
Council President.
Oh, go ahead.
Charlie, I think Council President brings up a good point, and now it raises a question. I was under the impression that this did not have an age demographic issue, it's gonna be pricing to reflect across the board as equilibrium pricing, but lower. She's done some homework in hearing something different from Piscataway. I'm not happy to hear that. Can you clarify the pros and cons?
Sure, if I understood correctly what the Council President was saying, and correct me if I'm wrong, was just that there was maybe some not as strong support among certain, you know, older folks for, for the, the implementation of the, the program. Everyone who's in the program is still getting the same price, and in general, these programs typically have an opt-out rate of 10 to 12%. I'm pretty sure that we were close to that in Piscataway. There's, there's always gonna be some folks that are not comfortable with, with a change and want to keep things the same way, and they have that option, and they, they were able to avail themselves of that if they didn't want to join the program for any reason, or no reason, they're able to do that at any time. But everyone who's in the program is treated equally and pays the same price, and it is, it is cheaper in Piscataway and New Brunswick than it would be to, to do nothing. nothing.
Now, it's nothing new that everybody was able to compete with pricing and call a third-party. That's been going on through solicitation for about 10 years. So you could have voluntarily get involved in this tomorrow. What's the difference between what we've been doing yesterday with people just voluntarily picking a third-party than tomorrow with this option? Am I hearing that we're going to be thrown in one fishbowl and yet we can be involved in the aggregated, you know, price lowering automatically with an opt-out option? So I'll be thrown in the fishbowl without signing up? Just explain.
Yeah. So, you know, the key benefit to the aggregation is that you're able to leverage the buying power of the community to get the best possible price. When you're interacting with a third-party supplier on your own with just one home, you don't have that buying power to be able to get the best price. You get offered the standard consumer price and you're in it. And it's also, you know, we do hear experiences of people saying, you know, I signed up at a low rate, and a few months later, my rate was jacked up, and now I'm not happy with the situation. Whereas when you do it through the Government Energy Aggregation Act and you do it as a community, you get the benefit of being able to lock in that price for 18 months. And to do an actual, you know, administer a bidding process where you can get the different quotes and make sure that you're getting the best price that meets the renewable standards for the township.
Last question, Counsel President. Charlie, is it an automatic voluntary opt-in and it's an automatic voluntary opt-out?
So for commercial or industrial users, the businesses of the town, they would be by default outside the program but could join at any time. The residential customers would be by default opted into the program unless they've already selected a third-party supplier besides PSENG, or unless they have installed solar, you know, power generation at their home.
And you mentioned they can choose to opt out at any time.
Any user can opt out at any time, and any user can opt in at any time.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel President. Thank you, Charlie.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? You good, Councilmember Batil? You're satisfied with it so far?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay. I thought you were asking a question. All right. All right. Okay. So now, I would like to thank you so much, Charlie, for your presentation. And thank you. Now we'll go to oral petitions and remarks. All right. All right. Wait, we're... Okay. All right. Okay.
Now we're open to the...
Now we're open to the public. I think I see one hand. All right. Can you get that? 8735?
Name and address.
Name and address?
Crystal, Edison, New Jersey. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. This is only in reference to the...
No, it's oral petitions and remarks.
Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Oh, so we are in public comments?
It's oral petitions and remarks. Go ahead. Go ahead, Crystal.
Okay, thank you. At the last Edison meeting, my civil rights was violated again. Lawyer Northgrave told me I can only speak for Edison issues and not curse. Even though I followed those rules, Lawyer Northgrave had me muted during my public comments when I had the floor, violating Loesman v. Riviera Beach, Florida Supreme Court case law. It is illegal to throw me out, mute me, interrupt me, and censor me when it's my time to speak. I'm supposed to have six minutes. I was muted shortly after three minutes. Lawyer Northgrave isn't just violating the law and censoring the public. I also have proof he is changing the rules of every meeting for council members and members of the public. During public comments, the law allows us to speak for anything we want, not only Edison issues. Also, cursing is a constitutionally protected activity. I blame the town council members for not putting Lawyer Northgrave on a leash. He is there to provide counsel to council members, not to run these meetings for Mayor Lanky and throw people out. Council Vice President Sam Joshi even strongly encourages censoring members of the public. Northgrave even discriminates on me when he allows all residents except me to have a rebuttal. I am now filing court claims and lawsuits against Edison Township. Town council members privately told me if I speak for Edison issues and not curse, that they will tell Northgrave not to interrupt me. So why they, along with all the members on the council, stay silent the last time and every other time? My reply to your proposals is this: I have no personal ambitions. I don't want any money or fame. All I want to do is do what's best for my city, my country, and my people as best as I can. If the council people's proposals are in line with the interests of my homeland and the USA Constitution, then the town council and Northgrave does not need to make such suggestions. Yet if they're contrary to the USA Constitution, I will never dishonor myself, my homeland, or my people. No amount of money in the world could convince me to accept this proposal. You are trying to bribe me without knowing my character. About the racist flyers, Sam Joshi promised to let us know who the fingerprints belonged to. He still has. And so I'll update the public for the town council. The racist flyers threatening to deport Indians and Chinese are Jerry She's campaign flyers disguised as racial flyers. Jerry She's running mate, De Sefano, admits under testimony at the Committee of the Hall that Shannon Peng was the creator of the teachers' union flyers that People for Progress paid for. The racist flyers was also paid for by People for Progress. So it's obvious where it came from. The Edison Democratic Organization Chair, Sharik Ahmad, paid $5,000 for the stamps. Mayor Lanky reimbursed him. Also, these were sent out by Councilman A.J. Patillo's tenant, Cesar Suarez, with Mahesh Bagia crime family playing a big role. This conspiracy was hatched at Mahesh Bagia's home with Satish Pundi present, along with Deepak Balani, the porno star. People are waiting here to hear one person, for you guys to say, oh, this one person's guilty. But it's a whole group of people, and they all have one thing in common: the Edison Democratic Organization. Tomorrow, the Edison Democratic Committee members, they're going to get to vote for their new chairman. And I just wanted on the record that you got four people to vote for, and three out of those four people were involved in the racist flyers. So what hope does Edison have that the Edison Democratic Organization is going to change? How many minutes do I got left?
One and a half. One, one and a half.
Okay. Counsel President, along with all members on the town council, did you receive the mail from the clerk that I sent about even more racial flyers that were made last year? Yes. Why is nobody investigating this? At least Jerry She's flyers, they were campaign flyers disguised as racial flyers. But these flyers that I'm showing you right now, they're genuinely racist, trying to say that every single Muslim person is a jihadi and that we don't want no 9/11 supporters in Edison. I would like the town council to denounce what's said in these flyers. I would like the town council to investigate who made these flyers. And I already know I did my own investigation. It only takes five minutes worth of research to figure it out. So it shouldn't be too difficult for you guys. And is Northgrave on the line? Hey, Northgrave, are you on the line?
I'm here, Mr. Crystal.
Good. I can't wait when these meetings open back up in public because if you're just going to keep trying to throw me out, first of all, Chief of Police, are you on the phone right now?
Public comment, sir. You can make your comment. You're not going to educate people.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Time's up. And number two, the last thing I'm saying, I do not know the origin of your, what is those flyers or something? I do not know the origin of them, so therefore I can't push them forward. But your time is completed. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. Anyone else? Galaxy X10. Galaxy X10.
Hi, it's Lisa...
Hello.
Can you hear me, Joyce?
Yes, absolutely.
Hi, Joyce. It's Lisa Zemuski. How are you?
Very good.
I just want to say thank you to Charlie for a wonderful presentation. And I have two questions. One, I'm confused on the businesses where they will be automatically opt out. I don't understand that theory since Edison has a huge industrial area, and they consume a lot of energy within our township. And second, my question is, if this comes to a vote, will it be open to the citizens, the residents, to vote, say comes November as a question on the ballots? And that's it. Thank you.
All right.
You want me to respond, Counsel President?
Yes, yes, please do.
Okay. Just briefly, I'm sorry, the way the lighting's set up here, I'm in the dark.
Don't worry about it. Okay.
The way the law is written, you opt out if you're a resident and you opt in if you're a business, as I understand it. And as to adoption, it will be up to the council at the next meeting, not Wednesday, but the, you know, the next council meeting after that, to either vote the ordinance up or down, similar to the water utility ordinance. And if it's voted up, then it becomes law. And if it's voted down, it goes to the residents in November. And I would assume, based on the questions I heard earlier, but I don't want to speak for them, that council is interested as to, you know, what the residents think on that. So hopefully that addresses your questions.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Are you done? Okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Who else?
Nope.
That's it?
No one.
Okay.
Wait one more. That might be Crystal again for a rebuttal. Do I get a rebuttal? Did they unmute me?
Yes. That's Crystal for a rebuttal.
You get a rebuttal? You rebuttal on what?
Okay.
What are you rebuttling, sir?
Well, everyone gets a rebuttal after public comments, right? I just want to speak about Charlie. I didn't get a chance to speak about Charlie Cradaville.
And he's rebutting Lisa.
You're rebutting what? Lisa?
Yes, yes. May I continue?
Three minutes.
All right. You have three minutes. Go.
Set the timer for later.
Set the timer. Three minutes. All right, go ahead.
Okay. So am I recognized?
Yeah, you're specifically speaking to the rebuttal of the water.
No, the energy.
I mean, I'm sorry, energy.
Absolutely, absolutely. I've been to New Brunswick, the Freeholder meetings many times, all the meetings down there, the council meetings, the MCI, the March to Defend Lincoln Manx School. And I just want to say Charlie Cradaville's a good man. He's leading the charge to defend these low-income students that they're trying to shove into a warehouse on contaminated property where they can get cancer. And I want, if there's any Middlesex County Democratic Organization Committee people listening right now, I want them to know that Charlie Cradaville is running for Middlesex County Democratic Organization Chair. Kevin McCabe is a disgrace. He's corrupt. He's shady. His best friend, Jack Morris, is one of the people trying to destroy...
Counsel President.
It's about Charlie Cradaville.
Counsel President.
Nobody else?
Counsel President.
Yes.
I don't mind Mr. Crystal's constitutional rights to speak, but he cannot, if I'm correct, some things he's are saying are not allowed and permitted. I do measure the rights he has to speak, but we cannot be campaigning for anyone during...
No, I'm not campaigning.
You are. You can't be saying... Crystal, I just want... It's got to, we got to put a, we got to put a measurement on what you're allowed to talk about, Mr. Crystal. I don't argue your constitutional rights, but there's, you're going over the boundary, and I'd appreciate if you don't bring politics into it. I will support you on any other thing, but you have to measure what you're saying. Thank you.
I apologize. I'm going to change it. I'm going to change it and just say that I'm a big fan of Charlie Cradaville, and that's why I support him over anybody, other person. So I'm sure that's legal to say. I appreciate what he's been doing. He's always on the right side. And I'm just, I'm just going to end it there. But just to say, Counsel and Coyle, I would like to be shown evidence that I cannot do a constitutionally protected activity. You're probably correct. I'm not going to disagree. Until then, I'm going to follow what you say. But I would like to see proof on that. And I'm going to yield my time because I got somewhere else to go. I can't waste any more time on this call. I want to say I love you to everybody. I love you, Marlena, Cheryl. I'm not going to mention every, all the council people and whoever's listening, except you, Lawyer Northgrave. Northgrave, you're always kicking me out. You got to earn my respect. You lost my respect. I yield my time. Have a good day.
Okay. Well, I have to tell you this before you go off. I have to tell you this, Crystal, that a rebuttal does not mean you can come back and start a completely whole different subject. So next time you do a rebuttal, if you do a rebuttal, you have to stay on topic and you have to rebut what has been said prior to you, okay, in a situation. All right? And, you know, I'm trying to do the right thing, and I understand your freedom of speech and everything. But I also understand that you can't yell fire in a crowded room also. So we have to think about that, too, when we're discussing that. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Motion closed.
Motion to close.
A move.
All right, here we go. All right. All right. Now we move on to, now we move on to the meeting. And we'll start with, if we have any reports from any council members. That would start, and we'll start off in alphabetical order, starting off with Councilmember Bresch.
None at this time, Counsel President.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Coyle?
Thank you, Counsel President. I just first want to thank Counsel President and the council and the mayor's office and administration for the continued support of the beautification committee. As some of you know, we have been working on our first project on Ambly Avenue, soon to move on to Winter Street Park, Happy Annie Park. Councilman Gomez and I had an opportunity for Main Street in Bottom Town, Silver Lake, other councilmen and I as well, Swales Park. We've also talked about wildflower program. This is something the mayor's office is going to research, whether or not wildflowers in certain parks will make sense in the backfields of areas where there's high grass. This would offer an opportunity to create beautification in a scenic setting, and in some cases, limit the time on cutting grass in the backfield areas. So I'm looking forward to continued support through Councilman Gomez and Councilman Batil, who serve on the beautification committee. who serve on the beautification committee and the continued support of this council, Council President and the mayor's office. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Deal?
None, none at this time, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Gomez?
Uh, yes, Council President, thank you. Uh, the Finance Committee, um, met a couple of weeks ago with the Tax Assessor and Ken DeRoberts, uh, head of finance, uh, with the B A. And it was revisiting, um, the threshold for which the tax assessor currently has for tax appeals. Uh, this has come up in the past and, and, um, it's being revisited and included with council members in the package to understand the, uh, what's being proposed in a little bit more detail. I believe Joanne is on the line. Um, I just wanted to ask Joanne if she can just, uh, give a brief overview and, and just kind of walk us through. Uh, we had the county assessor on the line as well on the call when, uh, when we discussed this. So I will switch it over to Joanne to just, uh, give us a, a brief overview.
Hi, good evening, council. Um, you have a packet in front of you that explains the, the details of the resolution. Um, it is essentially, um, my predecessor had a resolution established, which, um, when she was in office, which limits settlements that do not require council approval, um, to $2,000 or $43,900 in assessment. Unfortunately, uh, when that resolution was instituted in 2013, um, the numbers corresponded. But with the changes that are going on with our equalization rate and, uh, market values in town, that $2,000 does not correspond to the $43,900 in assessment. So the packet that was provided to you for review addresses how this is affecting, uh, tax appeal settlements to date. Um, and so we are asking your consideration, based on the materials that were provided in that packet, uh, to raise those limits to the numbers that were agreed upon by the Finance Committee.
Is there any more detail specific that you would like?
And I just want to add, uh, part of the recommendation of the Finance Committee to move forward with this is really all with the intention of being able to move these appeals quicker and not having the exposure of having to go in front of the courts or mediator. Um, you know, with everything that's going on today, uh, related to COVID, we do anticipate that we were gonna have a much higher volume of appeals. And if we have the opportunity to be able to negotiate these at a much quicker rate and be able to settle them at a, at a favorable amount to the town, uh, then this will be a win situation. Um, you know, uh, increasing the threshold will, will give us the opportunity to do that. Um, you know, currently, I don't really, we don't see any downfall from it. And as anything else, we can always assess as we go along. If the environment changes, then it's always, you know, we can always revisit. But it's, it's really not a whole lot of downside. And, and part of what the, uh, county assessor had also encouraged is the ability to expedite and move through these and not let it build up, uh, which is, uh, effective negatively in, in the process. So just, uh, wanted to add that as well.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, in the packet, it showed that presently, this year alone, we have about, uh, 577 appeals at the county level. Now, that is different from tax court appeals, which tend to take a longer process for resolution. County tax appeals have to be addressed before the end of the year. Normally, the deadline is April 1st, but due to the present, uh, pandemic, that timeline was extended until July 1st, which also resulted in the higher volume of appeals. With the present limits in place, I have between 50 and 100 appeals that can be resolved without, um, as much exposure to the township, um, that are slightly over that limit. So that is one of the reasons why we requested the meeting. Um, information was provided by both our Tax Appeal Council, Fred Rubenstein, who was also on the line, and our County Tax Administrator, who was a participant in the Finance Committee meeting. You have correspondence from both of those individuals, um, expressing the need to visit the situation.
Council President, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
And, and.
Councilman Brescher.
Yes, I don't know who I should address it to, but, um, I, I didn't get to read, um, this information yet. So can, can you tell me, I, I heard your limit was 2,000. What is the new proposal?
The new proposal would be to raise the limit to 7,500 per appeal.
And then what you're saying is we would spend less money on attorneys because you would be, uh, working on this like personally, as opposed to having an attorney work on it?
It wouldn't, it, it, the attorney issue is not the factor here. Although if we do negotiate it, it would spend less time at a hearing, which would result in a higher attorney fee, attorney fee, excuse me. Uh, what this does is we recognize if the town has exposure. It's in the town's best interest for us to deal with that exposure quickly instead of having the necessity to go ahead, try to come up with a value and then try to come up with a timeframe in order to be able to address it to the council to get that approval. If it falls beyond the limit that's presently in place. For example, if the meeting were today, I would have had July 1st. If my hearings are scheduled in August, I don't have any other meeting before your August meeting in order to be able to address this issue. So time is of the essence, which is why the limit is also being requested. I'm not sure if Ken or, or Fred wanna.
If I could, uh, if I could just chime in and just, uh, add a little bit further texture, Councilman. Uh, the challenge that we have is Joanne is constrained at offering no more than a $2,000 settlement. So if the taxpayer is seeking, say, a $5,000 settlement, but the re- reasonable level of settlement might be $3,000, she can't go any higher. So when it goes to the county tax board, they're either looking at our $2,000 or the request for $5,000 and invariably, the county tax board will go with the higher one. So we lose that ability to effectively negotiate. So that's why we need to arm her with more flexibility because it's proven that it's cost us money in the past in these settlements.
Oh. But so, so what you're saying then is that when we go to, let's say, the county, um, they just don't find in our favor?
If I may, um, what, I'm sorry, Joanne.
Go ahead.
No, is that, is part of the, it's diff-, it's a, it makes it very difficult to negotiate a settlement on an appeal where, that has merit because we, because Joanne only has a limited amount of authority. And, and what's been happening is we end up going before the Middlesex County Board of Taxation for a hearing. And at that hearing, you know, they have been looking at Joanne and I and saying, how come we can't settle this? We can't settle it because it's outside of Joanne's authority. So then it's left to the county board to make a decision. And what's been happening is, is their decisions are turning out to be higher in terms of what it costs the township for, for settlement and refunds than what Joanne would have been able to settle the matter for. And obviously, the less appeals that we have before a hearing, it's less time that I have to be there as well. And then obviously, say, it's the township quite, you know, can save the township money. Because by way of example, Joanne, as she just mentioned, has upwards of, let's say, 100 appeals that under the current authority, she can't settle. So that is 100 appeals that we sit there and we have to, they, the other side presents their case. Joanne presents hers. And rest assured, they're gonna say to Joanne and I that the settlement, you know, why aren't we not offering something higher? Because that's what it's really worth. And the response is, this is the, the extent of my authority. They will then turn around and enter a judgment higher than what we could have settled it for. So not only have you paid me to be there, Joanne has been there significantly longer for the hearings. And then we end up paying more to the taxpayer than what could have been settled. Um, that's why Mr. Menas needs the additional authority because she can eliminate a lot of these appeals within this additional gap from what she has now to what's being requested. And we can probably eliminate quite a number of appeals, um, that will ultimately save the town money compared to a hearing, as well as not having to pay for, for fees and costs, well, fees, attorney's fees, um, to appear for these, for these hearings. Right now, I think we have, what, two days of hearings at least, possibly three?
Yes.
So, you know, we could be sitting there for, well, day for two or possibly three days. But if we can eliminate 100 or maybe more because of this increase in authority. And again, and they're only primoratorious appeals. You know, we may think that the, the, the right refund is 3,000 or 3,500, um, but we only have two. The hearing officer might think it's worth $5,000 in refunds. But we're not being given the opportunity to get rid of it for, let's say, the 3,000 or the 3,500 because Joanne doesn't have that authority. So this, this eliminates a lot of potential, a lot of appeals for hearing purposes, which is big to do because it's, uh, can get quite expensive and time-consuming. And keep in mind that the county administrator himself, um, voiced his concerns last year as well over this. He expressed it to Joanne and to I, and hence why he wrote his letter as well. Because he was concerned that we were, that we were going to get hit with higher numbers than what she could have settled these matters for.
Well, let me ask you a question. Could, is this something that we need to do continuously moving forward? Or could we do this until the end of the year and do a little analysis to see how it's worked out for us?
I mean, as far as, if, if you grant what's being requested now, I, I can't see why, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Northgrave or anybody else, but I, I can't understand why you, it can't be looked at to see how well everything, everything went. Um, I don't, but I want to, you know, step my bounds and speak for anybody else who might, uh, you know, be better served to answer that question, but, you know. I think what you will find at the end of all of this is that, um, you will see that they were settled for less than what would have happened if we went to a hearing. Because keep in mind, a lot of times, Jo-, you know, Joanne is trying to sell these, let's say, for, let's say, a 10% reduction. When we go to a hearing, if they think there's merit, they have to give at least 15%. So on all these appeals that Joanne is trying to resolve with me that are coming, that we think we can get rid of for less than, let's say, a 15% reduction, when the county commissioners, when the county commissioner and hearing officer think it's worth 15, 16, 20%, that's what we're gonna get hit with. And that's for every one of these appeals. Um, and that's what's happening. And that's what happened last year during the, uh, county board hearings as well. Um, is that we made offers, or Joanne made offers, and we were ever so close, but we couldn't. And the hearing officer looked and said, you know, can you come up a little higher? And Joanne would say, I can't. And then we would, then they have no choice but to come in higher than even what they wanted to do. And that happened quite a bit, or happened more than enough, I should say.
Yes, last year, it resulted in about $58,000, to be exact. That was part of the memo. That was what was awarded to people that I tried to settle with for, uh, cases that had merit that were beyond my limit. And so what we could have offered, um, but couldn't, we, what we should have offered but couldn't resulted in the township paying off about $58,000 in refunds.
Uh, well, uh, Councilman Brescher wants to know that, and I'm, I'm speaking, I'm not speaking out of turn, Mr. Northgrave, but resolutions last one year. They last one whole year. So Councilman Brescher, if you want to reexamine it after a year, that's how long a resolution lasts.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, wouldn't you, you could.
Excuse me?
Yes, yes, Council President. And actually, I mean, you could even revoke it earlier than that. If, if you found that it's, you know, it was not producing the result you wanted, then you, you know, then whatever, at any meeting, you could take a, uh, another vote that were since, you know, resolution 1, 2, 3, 4. So that's gonna be completely in council's, uh, purview, if, if that's what they want to do.
Yeah, and Councilman Brescher, I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable to take a look, you know, come the end of the year and see how the, how the process is working and then reevaluate and whether it's working, continue, or if we need to amend it, then see what the market conditions are at that point and, and see whether we continue forward or, or make changes. So I, you know, certainly nothing, uh, I think that's reasonable. I think that's fair.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Council President?
Uh, Councilmember Chip, Chip Coyle?
Uh, to, to Mr. Rubenstein, is, uh, what is the timeline? Oh, Joanne can answer this. I imagine, can you give me a comparison of the timeline of negotiating, uh, through Joanne's new authority, uh, in compared to it going to the county? Is it an extra three months, an extra four months? I mean, are we able to bail out some, um, residents who may want to just settle sooner than later and accept what is it within Joanne's authority? Because I imagine she has comparisons of, of a pretty good defense and we've seen that. So can you give me a walkthrough on time-saving?
Well, for this year, Councilman Coyle, um, all of our hearings will have to be completed by September 30th. So at this point, like I said, there's about 50 to 100 appeals that I'm stuck in limbo until decisions made by council. So my first hearing day is supposed to be August 26th, tentatively. So, um, out of those matters, uh, if we try to negotiate something else, that's the timeframe that I have. Um, we've already had several appeals that have been settled at the, at a reasonable number that falls below the limit. Because our review recognized that there was some merit to those cases and we've had, um, over 100 that have already accepted settlement proposals. But these 50 to 100, um, are just shy, uh, with the estimated tax rate. And there's at least 50 that are $46 over, so that's what we're talking about. I'm gonna have to go to court and negotiate over $46 and may end up losing, you know, substantially more than that as a result of, um, decisions that the county tax board has to take under consideration when they hear the appeal overall.
Joanne, I'm satisfied. Thank you, Council President. I think it makes a lot of sense, uh, to give them authority to be able to negotiate. Uh, it's just not asking a lot. It's a small difference. I support this. Thank you, Council President.
All right. All right, any other, uh, okay, all right, so. Oh, we still on committees. Uh, who did, I'll just drop off with.
We're on Alpro.
That was Gomez.
Yes.
That's Gomez, Gomez, are you, have you completed?
That's all I have, uh, Council President. Thank you, Joanne, and thank you, uh, Mr. Rubenstein.
All right.
Thank you all.
You up?
Uh, none. Thanks.
Councilmember Patel?
None at this time, ma'am.
Thank you very much. All right, now, oh, I don't have any at this particular time to discuss. All, um, no, I'm, I'm still talking to them about a, we're trying to get a community garden. Some other cities have had a community gardening. I'm talking with Sally Yarborough and, uh, we're working with the Open Space Committee and stuff. We're trying to find a community garden here in Edison. Think that should be nice. You know I'm a quality of life person. Um, so I, I'm, I'm trying my best to move forward on that. And the different things on the splash parks and the restrooms, I'm still, uh, sending stuff in, but it's, it's, it's close because money is tight in the county. And so the different grants and loans that I'm still, I'm still gonna chase down, no matter what. Still gonna work hard at it. All right, uh, our point of life was what will happen to us all is that all our meetings will still be on Zoom due to COVID until further note, notice. And, uh, some people send me questions online and everything, but they don't understand. I have to, I, I can't speak. I have to go by the governor's guidelines. It's the governor, then it's, it's the city. So I want everybody to know that whatever the governor, that Governor Murphy puts forth, uh, you can send me emails and stuff and everything. They gave Anthony emails about masks and how it being worn and all that. We have this followed specifically with Governor Murphy. And from what I've gathered so far, New Jersey is not doing too bad at this particular time because a lot of us are following rules. And I, I'd like to applaud everybody from New Jersey for following the rules because I, you know, I want to be in this position like in, in 2021 coming around. So I'd like to applaud everybody for staying close. So I'd like to applaud everybody for staying close to the rules. Now, uh, if anybody has any comments or questions, remember, we're not voting on anything tonight because this is a work session. Some of us, some of us haven't had a work session in so time that it wasn't a double deal, you know? So therefore, we finally got two separate nights, Monday and Wednesday. So uh, from the business administrator, from A, A through H, is there anything you would like to comment or have any questions about at this particular time?
Council President, I have a question on E. Uh, this is for a renewal for the GPS?
Yes.
And I'm wondering, did we get bids on this or is this just a renewal with the same company?
Jim?
Councilman, it's a renewal with the same company. We've used this product for the past seven years. We purchased it under the Middlesex um County Educational Service Commission Cooperative Contract. And we have it deployed in about um two hundred and fifty six township vehicles and another hundred and forty public safety vehicles.
Right, my, you know, I guess what my question is, this dollar amount, has it been the same dollar amount for the last seven years?
Actually, this year we got a ten percent discount because we did have some some issues that we worked with the vendor on to 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 resolve, but because the issues did take along, take a long time to resolve, they did give us a a little bit of a discount this year. But it it's basically the same, roughly the same price.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I guess you know where my concern is, is let's say, seven years ago, to track a vehicle um technology wise, that was, you know, the the new latest thing. So you paid for it and and you you paid a substantial sum. Um, but nowadays, they have these little tracking devices, you know, you can place them on vehicles or whatever it is and and you can monitor this stuff like on your cell phone.
Right, so this this is what these do. These GPS units, they they connect to the onboard computer of the of the vehicle and we get all the telematics from from the vehicle in terms of like speed and and vehicle use, engine issues, and that gets reported back to our our garage for for maintenance purposes. They can be on top of any vehicles that might have an issue that haven't been reported by the driver. Uh, there's also um sensors that we have put into, for example, plows. So we know of streets being plowed or not plowed. And this compared to other products and vendors that are out there that are available under contract, various contracts to co-op or state contract, this is the best product for the price and for what's out there available in the state. There were other two others that are available out there, but they're not a as robust or or I give you the the data that we get off of these.
Jim, can you give me the data of how many times are vehicles um sent an alert in to our mechanics that said that something needed to be fixed and they actually fixed it?
Um, we can run reports to say what vehicles have active check engine lights on or active vehicle faults um in terms of the fleet department and fixing it. Um, I I would defer you to the to the public works on that.
Oh, okay, but I'm I'm saying, you you're telling me that that's one of the highlights of this device over the one for fifty dollars that you can get and operate. So if if this is one of the perks of it, I'd just like to see that the perk is being used. Because if it's not, then maybe you can go with the fifty dollar device for the thousand vehicles we have and and we can reduce that cost in half. Um, that's where I'm kind of going with it, is that since it it hasn't been bid, I don't know that I I feel comfortable in knowing that, you know, it's the cheapest price that we could get for an old antiquated technology.
It's it's not, it's not old and antiquated. Uh, we do refresh the units every few years and and the system is a cloud based system. So the software is constantly being updated and there's there's always new features being added to it.
Well, okay, right, that that's where I'm going. Are we using those features or primarily using it just to track the, you know, garbage trucks so we know where they are or the police so we know where where their police cars are i in case of emergency? What I'm saying is, is that system that we're predominantly using it for, do we have the, is this the cheapest thing? Or are we paying for a whole bunch of bells and whistles that we necessarily don't use?
It is right, it it is right now the um the the cheapest solution available in New Jersey under under cooperative contracts. Uh, others out there um were were slightly higher. Uh, we're paying roughly twenty six dollars a month per vehicle. Where our others are averaging about twenty nine to thirty two.
Okay, what, what, right, why don't we do this? Because I don't seem to be getting anywhere with this one. Um, can you just give me a list of everything that this program does, right, um, for us? And then I'll just, I'll take a quick look at it.
We can do that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Coyle.
Uh, the B, Facebook Live. Uh, I understand we're budgeting twelve thousand dollars to record our meetings. Um, I know the residents of Edison have, you know, asked for that. I know Councilman Joshi and a few council people and others have uh believe this is necessary. Is it, is it going to require any additional cost aside from this cost to run it? Are we going to have to have an additional employee, employee? Can someone walk me through the process of additional maintenance involved? Or is it just setting up the camera and setting it, forgetting it? Is it part of just the TV? Part of the TV group?
The Councilman, it's Jim. The uh, the system is integrated into the audio video system of the room. So it's now a one touch button on that panel. Um, so when Marlena or the person who's running the audio system in there, they just have to hit one button and it pushes it out to Facebook.
And um, Council President, have we decided the decorum of what we're going to do, whether we're going to answer questions? Is it just going to be a feed only or is it going to be interactive?
I don't understand your question.
What I'm saying is that is the residents of Edison going to make comments and we're going to stop the meeting to direct to comments or is it just a feed for recording only?
It's going to be a feed, Councilman.
Okay. Okay. Um, all right, thank you, Council President.
All right. I thought I would say a little something on the tracking system back and forth. I don't want to, I mean, we, it's profitable. You've already, you know, went out to the county and stuff and I don't want something so, so cheap that we have to uh choose more from it than we gain. After, you know, I read that about the uh, the tracking system, the GPS and the real time tracking system. I was reading on some of the stuff and the information about it and the stuff that we received the information from. And I just don't, you know, I don't want to go so cheap as that we got somebody stranded over here or, you know, something goes on. You know, it's it's funny. When you get rid of a system or undo a system, then the problems come and they mount overnight, you know, and then you have like ten or twenty or whatever. This, I just like for us not to always think, I mean, we get the lowest bid and stuff, but I've seen some things around here that had a low bid that I'm very, very disappointed with throughout this town. So I, rather than too low of a bid, I would rather have a fair bid where we can actually get something for the amount of money that we spent. At all, all right? Anybody, anyone else from the uh, from A to H on the business administrator, from the business administrator?
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Council President. Just a question uh for Mr. Davico. If, is is there a need to purchase that equipment now since we're now, so direction is going to be a meeting? Is we're currently broadcasting through Zoom? Um, do we need to make this expense or this investment now? What's the timing?
Um, it 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 does, it does give us a lot of additional features in terms of integrating with with the TV studio because it does convert all the audio and video from the room now to a uh, an IP based uh broadcast. So it makes it a lot easier for them to do their work in their studio, to re-render the videos. Um, there's a lot of other advanced features that they, that um come with it as well.
Okay, so how do you envision Facebook being used in the near future meetings since we're not going to be live, we're not going to be uh in person? Uh, what functionalities will be used for that purpose? How is that going to be used?
Um, we are going to be able to start recording things in the council chambers. I do know that I've been working with the planning and zoning boards as well, who are going to talk about doing a little more in the chambers and bringing their their um committee people in there. I would say we're probably, it's going to take a while to get it set up and configured. So if we're back in the council chambers by, say, August or September, I'd like to have it up and running by then.
Okay, thank you.
From what I understand, on channel, yeah, from what I understand, on channel, what I understand, on channel fifteen, I spoke with someone, they have uh, what's that kind of TV? Satellite, satellite. And they said they're unable to, you know, we play it, we play all the information back, we played on channel fifteen, that people who fortunate enough to have cable, that, you know, that expensive luxury, uh, they, they told me that they can't, they can't get that. So I thought that, you know, the Facebook, a part of it, they would just have to sign up for Facebook. They don't have to be a daily participant, but when the movies and stuff, the movies, I mean, but when our council meetings came up, they would be able to view them. They said that they they liked that, uh, I spoke to a couple of people, they said they liked that part of it, only because they they don't have the cable. So the only way they can have access to the meetings is through the um Facebook. That's just what they told me.
Thank you. And I think it's, it's a good point to share, Council President, because I I wouldn't call it, I don't know myself would call it a luxury. I think it's a, I'm not a fan of cable, but so I'll leave it at that. But uh, for those residents that are watching now, you do have the ability to go on your computer or or iPad or whatever device you might have and be able to access from the uh Edison TV portion of the website. Uh, so that's another feature that they can benefit and, you know, so it's not contradictory to Facebook, but it's another option that they have even for those that do not have Facebook. Thank you, Council President.
This is so they see it live. Okay, this is just so they see it live. Thank you. Anyone else?
Council President, uh, question on G.
On G?
Yeah, question on G, you know, uh, through Council President, this question is to the Maureen. Do we know how many people are covered or how many departments are covered under this cellular phone service?
We do, we can get you a list of those phones.
Uh, thank you. That's it, Council President.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Still on the business administrator? All right, moving down to Department of Finance, nine A through S.
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Brescher.
I have a question on C. That's our temporary budget appropriations?
Correct.
The dollar amounts used um specifically for the the water, is that based upon last year's budget or is that your new year, the the new budget that was just proposed?
That's based on the proposed budget. Um, you know, I know we're in talks with uh different council members about adjusting that rate. I I can adjust that rate for Wednesday's meeting.
Okay, and the the rest of the budget is from that percentage of our last year's budget, correct?
Correct, for August.
Okay. Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So Maureen, uh, just double confirming through Council President, uh, the except water, the rest of the budget is the appropriation is one twelfth of the last year's budget, correct?
Correct.
And for the water, this is one twelfth of the proposed budget.
That's correct, yeah. That's the one I'll be making an adjustment to by Wednesday.
Are you satisfied, uh, Councilmember Patel, with the answer?
Yes.
All right. All right, moving right along to the Department of Health, ten A. Okay, that's fine. Um, I want you to know from the Department of Law, I'm adding two, I'm adding two more on L and M.
They should have gotten it, I emailed this every.
You should have gotten it from your email. Did you receive it from your email, the L and the M?
Well, there's additional planning board.
Planning board, two planning boards, two planning board, uh, resolution. Did you receive them? Did everybody receive them?
Yep, I did.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody received, I wanted to make sure before I I called it off so that everybody would be able to speak on them. Okay, from the Department of Law, uh, eleven A through M.
Council President?
Are there any uh comments or questions?
Council President, question on F. A question on F, thirty one Fox Road. Is this going to be the open public bid or is this something we are working out with someone that's around that neighborhood?
No, this is, this is the property, Councilman, that was identified. Uh, actually, a couple of years ago initially, we communicated with the adjoining property owner. We got a letter from his attorney saying that he was not using the property. Um, we had someone from the town go out and and take a look and supposedly it was confirmed. Um, and then it, uh, Councilman Brescher raised it again, um, uh, three months ago or so, two months ago. Uh, and this time I went out personally and took some pictures and it's clear that the uh, person using twenty nine is occupying thirty one. If it appears from the limited amount of the records that apparently there was a tax sale at one point without realizing that that garage was two different lots. The first bay was one lot and the second two bays were a second lot. So what this does, what this authorizes is the town to put that property out to bid um and then it'll be sold to the highest bidder. You know, presumably the the person, you know, person who's next door is one most interested in it. Um, the problem is because there's an improvement on the property, normally we could sell to an adjoining landowner, but that is limited to unimproved property. And because there's a garage on it, it it limits the township's ability under the local lands and buildings law. So that's, that's the purpose of uh of that ordinance to declare its surplus and put it out to bid.
A billion of, thank you for additional information. My question there is, the garage, is it built by the owner, the uh, not the technical owner of the property? Doubt the permits, permit, anything?
Now, my, my understanding from the limited amount of the records that we have was that the garage was built. There was a garage existing. It was a tax sale on the garage and the and on, and the garage comprised two lots. It was subsequently sold, one lot was sold to a probably a predecessor in title to, I believe it's twenty nine Fox, but it left the second two bays on the other lot. And so that's, that's, that's what caused this problem. Again, based on the records that we have in the tax assessor's office.
So my question is, you know, more or less is the, if the garage is built on this property, township should have some sort of a card in terms of the permits or an inspection or in anything related to the tax payment, something, right?
I. Okay, Councilman, I'm not sure I understand the question. We we do have some records in the tax office and that's, that's what the background is. in the tax office, and that's, that's what the background is. In, in terms of when the garage was built, I can ask the construction office to see what they have. But it's, in terms of how we got to where we are, that the Tax Assessor's Office records told us that.
Okay, you know, if you can, you know, help to find out the information from the Building and Construction Department?
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll ask them.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Council President?
Councilmember Coyle.
There, there, back in the day, when we had properties that were being approached to the planning board, we used to commit, we used to ask a commitment from the applicant to put out a sign that would notify the residents of what was being done. Could we, in the future, if we're going to sell any land of the township, is it fair that we institute a resolution that a sign be put out front, that there is a public bid available for a piece of property for sale? What I, what I believe is challenging for other residents is that there could be an inherent economic interest that's unknown, but when it's aware to the public, where there's a sign, no different than the signs we have when homes are for sale, it draws a lot of attention. And when you're in the notification of, of properties listed on, on a newspaper, it doesn't have the same response as when you put a sign out there. And I'll have to say, like, I, I was not happy when we sold the property off of Metal Road. And I think we sold six acres for twenty-five hundred dollars, which to me, the pinch was, it was an environmentally unsafe property. However, I tend to differ the economic value of the people who take risk in that measure. And if we're going to sell property in the town to vet it in any parcel, anywhere, it would be only fair that a sign is posted to notify the community that a piece of property is being sold. And when a sign's out there, it raises a big alarm. And the way a property is being sold today, and the way the city is moving to suburbia, any sign is a notification. I think ninety-nine percent of your buyers today are looking for a sign. So although this case may be an inherent benefit of the owner only, I can't tell you that. I'm not, I'm not specing that property every day, and I'm not the neighbor next door who may have a different interest. So I think it's fair that this is something we consider. If we're going to sell property, a resolution should be written up that any property being sold should require a sign out front. I'm open to any council comments if people disagree. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Or anybody would like to comment on that?
Council President, can I ask a question about J? We're increasing legal fees, and we're halfway through the year. And I'm wondering what the need would be, you know, to increase these fees, when, when the fee was supposed to last us to the end of the year, and now we're only, you know, six months into it. We have some kind of extraordinary expenses in that part?
Yes, Councilman, that's this firm that is representing the town in the, defending the town in that, the suit brought by the officers. Candidly, as you and I know, and we exchanged some emails on this, you know, we didn't expect the Middlesex County Prosecutor's Office to have the indictment dismissed. And that led to these lawsuits. And that's, the original estimate from the firm was to handle some miscellaneous police-related matters. But this, this was unexpected, and that's why, that's why we, we, we need the, the additional money for the, for the attorneys.
Okay, so, so this is related to that, this last event that we just had?
Yes, yes, Councilman.
All right, thank you very much.
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Coyle.
In regards to F, I'd like to add, if possible, to this ordinance that a sign be posted. If that can't happen, I'd like to pull for a separate vote. I'm not asking for a full, that's F, an ordinance to township for sale of own property here, lot two ninety-six, lot thirty-seven, thirty-eight, that a sign be posted in front of the parcel, or near the parcel, as long as the sign is in a traffic area. I don't need the pro, the sign to be four by eight, but it should be at least the same size of any real estate sign.
I, I, Councilman, the, the purpose of the local lands and buildings law is to encourage competition, so I think that's a great idea. We just, let's see if we have in-house capability to make a sign up. But I think it's a great idea to let everybody know. I think, you know, we'll get the best price, hopefully. So.
Yeah, well, I don't, I, I, thank you, Mr. Northgrave. I'd leave that up to the administration. I think we have a sign department that pulls signs regularly. I, I would imagine they can incorporate a for-sale sign. I, I would ask that you write the, the verbiage of what needs to be on the sign, but, and that may need to be twenty-four by thirty-six, which would include the public notification, and the property for sale, and who to contact.
What I would suggest, what it suggests, Councilman, if it's okay with you, is I'll draft up something that would go on the sign, and then you're just introducing this ordinance now anyway, so it won't be affected until the following meeting. But in the interim, I'll circulate it to all council, and let everybody comment on what, you know, what the verbiage is, and make sure everybody's okay with it.
Is it fair, Council President, unless there's any council members that disagree, and through the advice of the attorney, that this resolution can be amended to add a sign out front in the right of way of a public property for sale?
I'm all right with it. I'm all right with it.
Thank you, Council President.
Councilman?
I'm all right with it.
Councilman Coyle, I just want to say that I thought you had a good idea, and I support it. I think, I, I question logistically if we can do it for all planning board, just because some months, we end up having twenty things on the agenda. But for this one, I think it's a terrific idea.
Yeah, Councilman Joshi, thank you. I'm just looking at property we sell only.
That makes sense.
I'm not asking for the planning board point. That's already been in the past. Just property, any sale of property owned by the township. And for this one today, I'm just asking that this, this resolution be amended to add the sign to notify the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coyle. Thank you. Anyone else from the Department of Law? All right, moving right along. From the Department of Planning and Engineering, I'm adding L. Did everybody receive that? Did everybody receive L? Okay. Twelve from the Department of Planning and Engineering, that would be twelve A through L. All right. Thank you very much. Moving right along, number thirteen, from the Department of Public Works, thirteen A through E. Comments, questions? Moving right along, from, from the Water and Sewer Department, fourteen A through H.
Council President?
Yes, Councilmember Brescher.
I have three questions with A, C, and H. I'll start with, I guess, A. This was the engineering, not to exceed three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. This was for a capital improvement project, I believe, and I'd like to know what the dollar value of that capital improvement project is.
Councilman, this is Bob Smith. Estimated construction cost is three point six five million dollars on that.
Okay, so, so this is close to like ten percent overall?
The engineering fee is approximately seven point six seven percent. Four, that would equate to about two hundred and eighty thousand.
Okay. My next question is on C. I guess, resolution, except for, oh. There was a question I had, I guess it's, is it E? It was about purchasing a truck. And I, and I understand that you need vehicles, but what have we been doing for the last six months, like, without this vehicle?
These vehicles are going to be more part of our construction side of it. We haven't done any of the construction work so far. We've been trying to accumulate all our, we finally got our, our trailer in, that we can haul our trackhoe around town. We were out the last couple of days, resetting some valve boxes. This truck is going to be for pulling, it's basically going to be like a mason dump. It's going to be pulling our valve operating equipment. We're not going to be tying up any trucks. It's a heavier-duty truck that we can pull. We also have two, instead of buying a box truck with all our emergency repair equipment, we came up with the idea, let's downsize. We bought two landscape trailers, and all of our emergency repair equipment will be on those trailers, which those trailers were like seven grand apiece, instead of buying a box truck close to a hundred thousand dollars. We went that route, and that'll pull those out. We have to drop one off. And if you recall, I guess years past, there was a lot of emergency breaks. So we're anticipating in the future, at some point, having multiple crews out, multiple, working on multiple. Breaks in the, in the distribution system. And we could also, if needed, use them on the sewer side as well.
Okay. My third question is H, and I guess this is for our attorney. This came up at our, our last meeting, and I, I was, I, I thought we were going to be briefed on, on what this, on what this was, and, and what happened before. And I haven't heard from anybody on it. And I don't know whether Mr. Northgrave reached out and, and kind of touched with the other council people, but I, I still haven't gotten an update for that one.
Yeah, Councilman, I, I, I wasn't aware that I was going to be talking to anybody other than, I thought you might have talked offline. There was a, when, when this contract was first awarded, we did speak to council. There was a question raised as to whether to award the contract. That, I believe, was in two thousand eighteen, the contract was awarded. And now this is a change order, but I don't have the specifics on any of that. I'll defer to either Mr. Smith or Ms. Ruwan as to, you know, moving forward with change order, as opposed to going out to bid for the work needed.
The, the change order for, on this job is for, the hydraulic valves in the pump station are shot. We can, they're over thirty years old. There's no replacement parts for them. There is no valves for them. What the, they actually wanted us to do was ship them a valve, and they would basically use that valve as a template to try to machine a new valve. We actually need three valves and an air release on that system, because the back pressure we get in that pump station is quite severe. And that station has already flooded out two times because of these valve malfunctions. So this is to replace all three valves, put in an air release. Like I said, that station has flooded twice, and it's wetlands around that station. If we should get a flood, and it goes into the wetlands, we got a big problem. So that's what the change order for the eighty-four thousand is, is to replace the three valves and put an air release in as well.
Well, my, I guess what my question is, is, is why couldn't we put a bid out and get a price from another contractor as opposed to using this contractor?
Well, I guess they already had the bid. They were doing the work. We had some engineering done on it, came up with the valves. They're already into it. They've already ripped things down. We just figured we have them keep moving along.
Can they just finish what they're doing, and, and then we could use a different contractor?
We'd have to put out an RFP, I guess, to have somebody come in, and we have to specify the valves we want, and go that route, sure, I guess.
Okay. I mean, I, I just don't understand, like, I, I heard that we had this contract back in two thousand eighteen, and here we're halfway through two thousand, two thousand twenty. So this is like a multi-year project, for some reason. I don't know why.
It's because it's been held up because of these valves. And when we tried to have, I guess, prior to us taking over, they looked into the valves, couldn't come up with any valves, like I said. They want to actually get a valve sent, they want to machine something. I don't know if I'm comfortable having them just try to machine a valve, and then we get these valves, and put them in, and none of them are operational. That's basically why this project is dragged on, is this valve issue.
Yeah, let me, so there's no way for us to get a new valve?
These are going to be three new, these eighty-four thousand are three new valves, plus air release valves.
Right, but I'm saying, as opposed to have one re-machined, can't you buy a similar-type valve and, and just change out the fittings on it?
No, not really, no. Well, for them to machine it, we're taking a big gamble. Like I said, we cannot even get parts for these valves. That's how old they are, and outdated. They, they, they were designed for that station. We've had multiple people try to come up with this valve, find this valve. Somebody's got one on the shelf. We've had no luck. They, they can't find them. And like I said, they want to machine these valves, and that's probably going to wind up being just as much of them taking the time to, you know, you're talking, they're going to have to do some kind of drawing, come up with some kind of designs, machine it, get it. Hopefully, it works. This could drag on for quite a while. It has dragged on for quite a while already. We know these valves will work, the ones we're recommending. It will be the solution that we need for that station. It'll prevent us from having any other additional flows. But that station is basically, this is, this job is dragged on for, like you said, from two thousand eighteen. And I just need to get the station online before we have a, before we have an incident over there.
Well, do we have any other contractors that we use on emergency basis?
Rapid Pump.
I think the question was the contractor.
Rapid Pump is a contractor, and Longo's a contractor. Longo got the original contract to do this upgrade for motors, and all the additional work that they were doing. This was just decided that we would like to add this to it, so, you know, there's no sense in redoing that station, what they've done, and then having these old valves. Two of them did not work. One is just band-aided together, it's failing. We're basically down to one check valve, and that's why we wanted to move along, replace the check valves. Like I said, we could, I'm not a hundred percent previously if they have gone to Longo for that. But there are two, there are two contractors, Longo and Rapid Pump are two contractors to do emergency repair work at the pump station. I can double-check to see if we ain't gotten a price from Rapid, and I can let you know.
Yes, I mean, I'd like that. You know, I, I'd like to hear from the attorney why I should feel comfortable with using this contractor at some time. Because I, I guess I've had concerns, and it's what I, I was bringing up at the last meeting.
Yeah, Councilman, I, I, if you, we, I mean, you and I can one-on-one talk about it, or we can discuss it with the entire county. I don't know what your preference is. It was, I, I, you know, succinctly, we had a lengthy discussion, maybe some of the council people might remember, that were there. I, I think we spoke probably for a half hour, forty-five minutes, and decided to award the contract. But certainly, I But certainly I'd be happy to discuss it further with you if you like, or we could do it in closed session. I don't think we should, I'm concerned about doing it in an open session if you want to discuss with the entire council.
Okay. My council colleagues already know what they're doing. I can speak to you directly.
Okay.
I didn't know that everybody is aware of all of this.
Yeah, it was, we raised it and maybe the clerk has the notes from the meeting, but it was a closed session meeting that was held prior to the award of this, the initial contract, which I believe was 2018. So there was a closed session at, again, I believe it was about a half hour, 45 minutes.
Okay, I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Council President.
Yes, Councilmember Coyle.
The, I guess, directed to Bob Smith or to the administration. The, A, the Matt McDonald, the $333,000 contract not exceed. They've been getting a lot of contracts from the Town of Edison. And I'm concerned, of all the work they're getting, I'm concerned with several issues on this. Why are they continually getting contracts for professional services? Because once they start, they're the only engineer to work on this job? Can you walk me through that, Bob?
Well, they were the contractor when I came on board, engineering contractor that we have, the town has under contract, so that's who I've been dealing with. I know of their reputation from just being in the business in the field, they have a pretty good reputation. I trust them. There's a lot of other engineering companies I've worked with in the past that I do not trust. I know they'll steer us in the right direction, guidance. I know we'll get a fair price from them, but as far as then why they have the contract, that's who had the contract when we came on board with the utility and that's who we've been using. If somewhere down the road that changes and someone else comes on board, that's who we'll work with.
And what is the scope of work in the $333,000?
This is for a brand-new pump station, Ford Millbrook Pump Station. That station's from the 40s. We cannot handle any additional flow. The station has an emergency bypass there that we're paying quite a bit of money for. We have a pump that they had to pull today, it was failing, to look at. We are, we cannot accept any more flow. And that is, all the flow goes into that station from the old Ford plant where Topgolf is, where they want to develop all that property. All of that flow goes to that pump station and we're at capacity as we are now. That station is critical, it's one of the major stations in town. We need to get that station upgraded and replaced. It's in a very sensitive area. The gas company decided to put a big gas main right behind the pump station. I believe we have jet fuel line that runs through the property and it's also right next to Millbrook Creek. That's going to take a lot of DEP permits and approvals and that's in a very sensitive area.
What does it cost us a month to run the bypass?
That, I think it's in the neighborhood of $8,000.
So if it prolongs, it's going to cost us roughly $96,000 for the year if we continue?
It has been costing you that.
And it's not exactly 100% running at capacity, I'm sure with the bypass. In this scope of work, is it just engineering or is engineering installation? I'm trying to look through it. It can't possibly be both.
This is engineering design.
Yes.
$333,000 to design a pump station?
It's, you know, of course, we'll put it out for bid. I don't know if they'll be involved in any of that oversight, but it's for, like I said, it's in a very sensitive area. It's going to take a lot of permitting with DEP.
I'm not arguing that, I just think when it comes to the administration's professional services, Matt McDonald gets to bid on this, gets to take, take the choice of the amount of money without a bid, is that correct, Maureen?
No, no, not to do the work, just for the engineering services. Like I said, this is one of the premier companies that work with wastewater and I work with a lot of different firms and I am 100% confident in the work that they do.
I am too.
There's a lot of other engineering firms out there and, you know, you can lowball prices, but, you know, pump stations and, you know, especially this one, that no further development can move forward at the Ford plant until we upgrade this system. I mean, this is a critical project.
I'm not arguing that, I just, the question I want to answer is, they don't bid on the 33, the $333,000, correct?
Correct.
Now, I just, not that we can control this, because obviously you're picking qualifications over a bid and some of us can understand that. Problem I have is that they're never pushed against the wall to sharpen their pencil. And I think they're overcharging us by 25%. And I think, I can prove that. The problem I have is, I don't know how many people they employ in the Town of Edison. I don't know where this money goes to. We think about spending money local and giving contracts to firms, we have to consider our local people. We're going through a very tough crisis of COVID. I know their reputation, but still, they're, to design a pump station, I don't think they're designing a rocket ship to take off into the atmosphere. I mean, this is, this is not that complicated. I don't disregard their engineering services, but I find it hard to compare that someone could design a pump station. I understand the permit process is a challenge, that's, that's more of a paperwork process. $333,000, I mean, they're, they're getting a lot of work from the Town of Edison and I'd really like to know how many people are being involved, where does the money come back to Edison to feed our economy? Because they got their hand well into our pocket here in Edison. And frankly, I have not been impressed with them, with their estimate reports on the sewer and water, which were guesstimates, which almost put us in a hole signing a concession agreement of $850 million. And, and thank God, we questioned their expertise because it was all based on useful life. There was no true dense CTV scope of work. It was just like, hey, we think this is what's wrong, this is the likelihood and you're going to need to repair this. So I'm just, I'd like to see, if they're the chosen one, I still like to see bids of what these cost comparisons are. Although we're picking qualifications over the price, I mean, if we're $100,000 off, that's a problem. And I just want to push them to sharpen their pencil. If anybody from the council disagrees, I want to hear. But I think they're well over a million dollars in contracts with us right now. And they're not, the hard work is in the contractor doing the actual work and fitting it out with the hardware. But I just don't think it's rocket science to pump sewage. I don't. And I believe there's competitors that can give us a fair price that could be trusted. Although you may have disagreements, Maureen, I'm not happy to keep hearing the amount of money Matt McDonald gets. This is probably the third contract that's crossed my path over $20, $50,000. I mean, they're eating pretty well in Edison Township. It's one thing if I knew they had 30 employees that lived in Edison, it'd be hard pressed to deny that. But I'm not aware of any of their employee base, I'm not aware of where the money goes in the economy, and I'm not aware of if their price is comparative or not. All I keep hearing is they're the expert, as if there's no one else that can build a pump station to pump sewage. I think we should be careful in this situation in COVID of who we're picking to continue to get our work. And I'm going to be asking to pull this. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. I myself, I myself find it interesting that we had to search all over the world because, you know, we went against Suez and I find it interesting that we put Bob Smith in, which is a job that you cannot easily get, you have to be highly credentialed to get that job. So most of the time, and I'm going back and forth, not to say I'm right or anything, but what I learned in life is that I just don't change horses in the middle of the stream. If the thing is going back and is going forward at this present time and we're moving the water right along, that's what makes people apprehensive about the energy. Because if you can't ever finish one project and you spend that so much time on a particular water, then how do we, how do we get from A to B if we stay at A all the time? You know what I mean? I'm not, I'm not a genius on it and I'm just telling you that a lot of people think, things seem easier than what they are when you're looking from the outside at all. I got a couple of degrees and all that kind of stuff, but I don't, I don't profess to know about sewage, water pumps, valves and information. Now, me myself, what happens when people take shortcuts, because I know, I've seen it happen to people, when they take shortcuts, you wind up paying double the amount of money to clean the mess up that you did before. So I tend to think things out very, very logically because I've looked at different areas and different things before and...
Council President, we lost your audio.
Yeah, you're muted.
Hello, are we back, we back on? Can you hear me?
We can hear you knock.
Okay, no, I'm just, I just find it, I understand people's apprehension and stuff like that, but I just find it that we spend a lot of time going backwards and I don't see us going forward. And I would like to see us go in some type of direction that we would be going from this point on, because every time you slow the process down, the money goes up for the individuals and stuff. And I can't say, oh, because X, Y, and Z wasn't done, all of a sudden now we got this horrible winter, all this stuff happened. And now I tell all the people from the neighborhood, I tell all the people that's getting the water now, I go, oh, and it's 30%, you owe now, because we dragged our feet on certain things. You know, I just want us to be forthright, upfront with our constituents, forthright, upfront, and I don't want them to always think that we're playing politics with them rather than taking care of the things that need to be taken care of in the town. I, that's what I, I want the people to know that, that the person who we sit and head of the whole water person, which is an expert at all, he's an expert in his field else he couldn't acquire such a position at all. And I just believe in that the people that they set forth to do X, Y, and Z are doing, are trying their best to move along and get to where they need to go at all. And, all right. Hold on one second, hold on one second.
Yeah. Who wrote that?
They created it looks like as their username.
You guys can't see that.
Yeah, he can. He can see it.
Who can see it?
Can you call, can you call Northgrave on that number?
Well, this isn't, it's happening now at the minute.
Fran is there, Fran is there, McNannian.
But that's not what we need for...
No, we need it, okay.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm here.
Okay. Did you see what somebody put there down there?
But where?
Wait, come on, I gotta call him.
She got, she has to call you for, she has to call you for a second, hold on.
Okay.
All right, just a few seconds, because some people, some knuckleheads put some stuff down, I don't know. They jumped off, all right. Making derogatory marks about the president, you know, people we have. You know, I thought that, you know, this little kiddie game, I can't wait till we come back to public. Just drop it off. It's so sad, it's very sad that you can't even have a, conduct a meeting or whatever without people playing childish games. Usually people who say stuff, usually that's what they are, that they always want, you know, that's who they seem to be. And as I was saying about the water, that's why I'm just expressing the way I feel about it and electrical and mechanical stuff like that, people say you're not a rocket scientist, but I don't know that all of us would be able to do the electrical and mechanical stuff for a pumping station. All right? Because if that was able to do, I think it would have been done by now at all. That's just all I'm saying. I'm just saying, pay close attention to the people that are doing the work, because you just can't get people off the street to do these type of jobs. Because you have to have some knowledge and some background. I know enough about educational stuff that I know that you have to know certain things back and forth to do different things. Because it's like, I wouldn't take my car to a dentist to have them fix it. I'm just saying, that's just my opinion on it. Thank you.
Council President. Council President?
Oh, Councilmember Coyle.
Thank you, Council President. I agree with you, forthright is what we worked hard on in our campaign. We fought about the sewer and water. I agree with you 100% in being forthright. What I disagree with this contract is that we don't second-guess their, their price. And in any situation, we have to question price, okay? The increase that the mayor's proposing is 22%. It's $1.5 million approximately. Every savings we have is a savings for our residents that we worked hard on for. And what I'm asking is just that we look at this opportunity, pull it for 30 days, it'll be another, we'll have to bypass for 30 more days, we get the proper bids in place to make them sharpen their pencil. I'm not asking we have to switch, to switch Matt McDonald out of the picture, but where is the pressure of making them sharpen their pencil? And as a councilperson, we represent our 100,000 people here in Edison and COVID and jobs is an issue today as cause a ripple effect. Tax appeals are coming away, people are hurting, every dollar counts. I, I don't believe this is difficult for us to do for 30 days or till the next council meeting, we request some bids for engineering. This is wrong of us as councilpeople to continue to never question their $333,000. This is just one job beginning from us. I'm tired of them overcharging us. I just want to make sure the process is fair. I'm not denying their expertise, but I've never been challenged to know who else could be in the picture that are experts. It's my job to continue to push. I'm asking the tools resolution, will not be voting for another contract by Matt McDonald unless I see comparison estimate. I'm okay with them getting the bid, but to keep allowing them to just throw out a price and just say, okay, yeah, $333,000. Some of us wouldn't be questioning the difference between 333 or 350. We got to question every penny here. And that's what I'm asking our council, to lead where the taxpayers deserve it and to make sure that Matt McDonald is not taking advantage of our taxpayers. There's no inherent need, there is no inherent need to do this today. We have waited a long time to finish this and we will. And I agree with you, Council President, what needs to be done will be done. But I'm not going to let them take advantage of the taxpayers because we're sounding desperate when no one touches pump station for 30 years. They can wait 30 years in one month.
I do believe... Um, I do believe that prior to me getting on here, that's why I told, uh, Councilman Brusher, uh, before we even embarked on a position that we're at right now, 25% was the amount you guys gave to Maureen in order for her to take it down there. Now, to, uh, Trent, um, what, what happens with me is, I have a problem with, is that you were 25% gun hole last year. Now we come this year, that is 22%, then we all of a sudden, we back and forth, I don't want the constituents to think that I'm just going to take and just keep kicking it down the road, kicking it down the road, and then the next time you turn around, here it is next year, then there's a big election, and then that's where we go, and then we forget all about the people, point blank. What I, what the major goal was for us to do was to make sure all the water's taken care of, make sure all the pumps are running correctly, and I'm sure, uh, and, and they have received emails and stuff about the great job that is being done right now. People are kind, people are happy with the way their water is to this point. We went against that gigantic Suez thing, but in reality, do you think that a, a, a starting of your own water company was going to be free? I mean, you, you, you had to put forth some expenditures in order to get it going. To me, I see it as we take care of it right now, and if this, and if, and, and next year, in January or another time, I can scream louder, because I know now, everything is in place, you're looking for the bends, the cracks, the leaks, I need to have all those things taken care of, because if I keep falling back and falling back, and a crack here, a fall here, a, a, a misplaced here, then what I'm doing is, I'm, I'm, I'm making myself pay more money, because then when somebody else enters in, it's going to be more money. You know for a fact that we signed on with, what's those two water places we signed on with? We still with American Water, something else, and still with some other water company, and we have these, we have these contracts out until 2027, all right? So, me, myself, I've been reading this stuff, and I've been realizing that I, I can't think that I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy something for a, a couple of, if you've seen the price on that Suez, you've seen the price on how it would, it would cost. 4.9 was not the real cost, because they were going to add an extra cost, that probably would have 10, 10%, anytime something would have broke, it would have went up another 10%, so that would have been like going crazy. But that, that's what I'm talking about. So, therefore, the way we would do it now, and do it the proper way now, because I always feel like that, I always feel like maybe I'm, I'm, I'm crazy, but I always think that if you take care of things in the front, then when next year comes, and you try to tell me something different, and you try to sell me another, a Martin, try to sell me something different next year, I'll say no, because you, you spent X, Y, and Z getting me up to snuff. So, now, when the next year comes in, you can't charge me that kind of money, you better, you better go down to like a, maybe a 5 or 4% because guess what? I, the big, the big money I spent, okay?
Counsel President, I agree, I agree with what you're saying about the work. What you keep, uh, getting wrong is that you're going towards the work, I want you to talk about price. I'm asking you to stick up for the taxpayers on price, and to defend this, this price of 333,000. I'm not denying the work, all right, we've agreed to the work, but you're not offering any opportunity for them to sharpen their pencil, you just think we have a checkbook to write money for everybody, and we shouldn't question it. I'm asking you to question this 333,000. If you disagree with me, then I, then that's your privilege, but I'm asking to question price. You keep going back to work, I'm asking you to question price. If you would still stay on the subject of price, Counsel President, price is 333,000. If you agree to that, I don't. I'm not questioning the work, I'm questioning the price. Stick to the subject, please.
Counsel President? But I'm sticking to this, I'm sticking to the subject, because I'm talking about the contract, if you can understand, I, I guess, Councilman Brusher, you know what I'm talking about?
You're not questioning the price, Counsel President.
Excuse me, we have these other contracts we have to pay that goes out to 2027 and stuff like that. You understand? Uh, Councilman Brusher speak, because I'm, I'm not going to exhaust myself.
Yes, I have a question for, uh, Mr. Smith. Are, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, my question, I, I have, I have two questions. One is, um, do you think that you could find and hire a qualified engineer that could do design work for you and help you in this endeavor? Is that person out there, and are you qualified to vet that person and hire that person?
Are you talking internally? The township hire someone?
No, I'm, no, I'm talking, yes, I, I'm talking about the township hiring an engineer that could design this, um, and the person that would choose that person would be yourself. Do you feel qualified that you could choose someone that could be capable of designing this type of work and doing this type of work? Or do you feel that you don't feel comfortable because you don't have the knowledge in this?
Uh, from being in the field, I, I, I think I could do it, and I think I know the companies we, you know, that they're just going to come give you a price just to get the job, and then we're going to be stuck with the nightmare. I've been stuck with nightmares after jobs have been completed, and the contractors have walked away, and...
No, that's not, that's not my question, my question is to hire an engineer. Do you feel that, that you're capable of choosing an engineer that's capable to do this type of design work?
Yes.
You do? So, that is an option that's on the table for us to hire someone, and, and this amount of work and this design, even if this were an entire year's worth of work, we could pay that engineer $330,000 just to design this. Um, so that's one option. My, my second option that I'd like to, to engage in is with our administrator, Maureen. I understand that on our agenda, we're approving 10, 12 potential architects. Now, in a typical pump station, you have a, a building, which is a shell, you have, you know, internal construction, which is structural by nature, which is concrete and steel ladders and things of that nature, and then you have a mechanical aspect of it. And any architectural firm basically goes out there and they subcontract out each of the portions to the appropriate, um, person. Like Mot McDonald is, is an engineering company, and they specialize in this type of work, but they don't specialize in, in building buildings. So, my question is, is it difficult for Maureen to go out to a few of our architects, and, and I do know of two of them that could give us a price on this, and ask them to give us a cost estimate for this pump station? Could we, could we end up doing that, Maureen, so that we have, um, uh, my fellow council colleagues, you know, feel comfortable in knowing that the price we have is legitimate and probably the best price?
Well, you're talk, you're talking about engine, engineering, correct?
No, what I'm talking about is typically, if I was going to build the township building, that building takes into account, um, many different aspects of engineering, okay? Plumbing, HVAC, electrical, different specialties, um, just like a pump station would. A pump station, you know, you have your, your plumbing, you got your electrical, you have structural, um, you got architectural. So, it's the same different group of professionals that get put together. So, what I'm saying is, could you go to one of those, or not one of them, but could you go to a few of those architects and get a price from them, uh, for a cost estimate for that pump station, and see what type of fees they're looking for just for the design aspect of it? Now, those same architects would use maybe Mot McDonald just to do the engineering for, for the plumbing portion of it, which is probably what their expertise is, but their fees on the building and the structural would be cheaper, because, um, well, that's what they do for a living. Could you do that?
Councilman Brusher, I've, I've never heard of that, maybe, maybe Bob has, but in my history, I've, I've never had an architect design a pump station, and let's just stay with this pump station, um, from what I'm being told and what I heard Bob say, um, you know, this isn't a simple pump station, there are gas lines that have to go around, and, but I mean, I'll let Bob jump in, I've, I've never, I've never heard...
Well, let me ask, let me ask Bob then. Bob, are you going to tell me in your professional opinion that you can't hire a professional architectural company that will subcontract out all of the different mechanical trades that would be required to build a pump station?
That's exactly what the engineer, uh, they would do, they'd go to an engineering company, whoever it may be, um, they may put out an RFP for the request, they may work with somebody already, but somebody will have to engineer that station for them. Um, you're talking pressures and flows and depths and...
Absolutely, yes.
They're going to have to do that, but then, more than likely, the, the, um, they're going to mark that price up from the engineering company as well.
Yes.
They're going to put their percentage on top of that as well.
Yes, but here's what I have, I have this engineering company you're going to that's charging 20% for a design of the structural part of the building. So, tell me what the cost of the structural part of the building is, and why I'm going to pay them like 150% more than I would pay any architect on the planet, or why I would pay them 150% more for the structural component than anybody else on the planet. So, that's, that's where my question is, what I'm saying is, you, you're going to the most expensive, um, part of building, and you're having them do the design of the entire building. So, the way you're going about it is, is not efficient, um, I mean, and where Maureen said she hasn't heard of an architect that's done it, uh, if Maureen would give me the telephone numbers for your architects that we're approving now, and I speak to them, I can probably come up with two or three that are more than qualified.
So, we would have to, so we would have to hire an architect, pay that fee, who then would sub out Hat, uh, Mot?
They would, yes, but they would only give them the aspect that they need them for. You see, right now, um, I, there's different aspects for building that pump station or any building. There is no one person in Mot McDonald that's an expert on the pumps and the flows and the electrical requirements and the structural requirements and the building itself. So, there, there is no one expert inside their shop, like that's a, the false nomer, and that's only because that's not what you do for a living. You know what I mean? Um, so that's where I'm kind of going with it, is I know that they're different expertise, I know that you can go to an architect, and that they can pull together, and they will pay those same fees. Right now, Mot McDonald's going to pay someone to do the different design aspects of all of this, just like we're talking about now. Um, I doubt that they're doing the entire thing in-house. Um, I don't know...
Councilman, I would say they're doing the entire thing in-house.
They are?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say...
So, you're unwilling, okay, so basically what you're saying is you're unwilling to hire a professional engineer that could save us money to do this and have him be an employee of yours, and you're unwilling to try and go to another architect, because you just want to hand it to this one vendor, like Councilman Coyle was alluding to and feels uncomfortable about. And if that's where we are, to be quite honest with you, I'm definitely voting no. In fact, I'm voting no just on the premise of Maureen not being reasonable to try and get other pricing to show the public and the council that these numbers are legitimate. And to be quite honest with you, uh, Mr. Smith, be quite honest with you, I do this for a living, just like you do. Um, I know we've had discussions, there's other ways to do this, I do understand that you're an employee of the administration, so there's certain things that you can comment on and you will not comment on. So, either Maureen is going to get these other prices, or I'm going to vote no, because I do feel that we're taking advantage of the public here. That's all, thank you, Counsel President.
Very much, Councilman Brusher. I, I know, I, I just was wondering, I figured that, uh, just have a bunch of people come in, and then we'll, then we'll, then the bill will be 500,000 instead of 330,000. Ah, all right, moving right along.
Counsel President, I just, I'd just like to comment that, you know what, you don't know unless you get the price. So, to make a comment that says it'll be 500,000 or 600, you really don't have a clue, okay? Nobody on the council does, neither does...
No, you don't have a clue, yeah.
Yes, so I'm saying, so get the price like Councilman Coyle is asking, okay? That's all that we're asking is to get a price. If not, then you're unwilling to, to work for the public for the cheapest price like Councilman Coyle was doing. We've already established that Maureen does not want to work for the public, okay? Mr. Smith, the jury is still out, so that's all I have to say. Thank you, Counsel President.
I don't, I don't, I don't see where Maureen said that she was not willing to work with the public, and I understand, uh, that it is, and we're, we're talking about sewer at this particular time, we're not even talking about the water, and I know that, uh, we'll end this conversation, because too many people know about water more so than I knew, that knew about water, and, 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 I'm sorry, and sewer pumps and all that kind of stuff, so I didn't know I had that many people, but I do think that if you get a whole bunch of, just keep getting more and more people and keep kicking the ball down the street, that's going to, I'm thinking about the taxpayer, it's going to cost us more money, each engineer and stuff we keep, to keep bringing in, bringing in, bringing in new people, and they'll just look at stuff and nothing will get done. But hey, what do I know, I'm just looking out for the taxpayer.
Counsel President, I don't disagree with you. Our mayor and our business administrator has kicked this can down the road for almost eight years, and what I'm saying is that a couple months won't matter, and it doesn't even take a couple months to get those price quotes. So, that's all that I was asking was what Councilman Coyle was, was to get the price quotes. But if the administration doesn't feel comfortable in doing it, it's fine, if they just don't have my support on that subject, I'm sorry.
Counsel President, Counsel President, Counsel President?
Yes, Councilmember Deal.
Thank you, Counsel President. Uh, you know, for the last hour or so, we've been hearing about how everyone wants to save the residents money, and let's not put an additional dollar tax burden on the residents, which I totally understand and I agree with. My question is, when we talk about going out for all these prices, these quotes, these estimates, are they free? Because if they're free, then I have no problem having other people give us free estimates or quotes, but if we're going to go out and get a bunch of bids and quotes and estimates, and it's going to cost us a lot of money, and we're going to end up in the same spot, then what are we really saving? Thank you, Counsel President.
Thank you, Councilmember Deal.
Counsel President, I have a quick comment to make.
Excuse me, sir?
Uh, my question is to Administration Maureen, and again, you know, we all are watching every dollar that is spent, our budget is tight, uh, we have a challenging year, and I agree with my Councilman colleague, uh, you know, Mr. Brusher and Councilman Brusher and Councilman, uh, Coyle. What we are not, I'm not, personally, I'm not saying that, you know, there is, uh, there is no opportunity for us to lower down this cost, the only the ask is, is there a way that we can go and shop around? There cannot be only one company that can provide us a bid, but this is a blanket, and this is not the first one. We have, you know, multimillion dollar, uh, the spending that's, that's in the pipeline as a part of the capital project. Once we gave this contract to one company, then eventually everything will flow down that route, so we are on early stage. I understand, we don't want to kick can down the road, but at least give us a try, you know, and that's where the appeal is here, is there a way that, you know, take 30 days, you know, shop around and find out if there are any competing firms that are available who can provide us a better price, or the same will can sharpen the pencil and come back, say, guys, here I can save you.
Uh, Councilmember, can we, can we get it done freely? Can we go to all these different engineers and get all this stuff done free?
That's why we have the experts, you know, we have the, you know, Mr. Smith.
No, no, I just want to know, can we get it done free? That's the only reason why I want to go other places, because like I said, you know, I agree with saving the taxpayer money, but, uh, I, I keep hearing that we want to go out and spend more money to come back to see if this money is okay. So, I'm going to spend like so many, so much money over here, and come back and find out that this is the best deal, and then that means I'm, that means I'm losing a lot of money on this end over here. You know, that's just my question, that's just my question, Councilmember Patel.
Counsel President, if that's the case, you know, why we are having you on the council meetings here, we can give the... We can give the blanket orders to all the vendors that probably the township likes. And we shouldn't be voting on it. Plain and simple.
No, 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 no. No, I wanna know, I wanna know what is it gonna cost us? I'm, 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 I'm fully aware of what I'm talking about. I wanna know the cost, okay? That is gonna, that it will cost us. I never said a yay or I never said a nay on anything. I just wanna know what it will cost us to go and get other engineers to come in to tell us something that, that they may come back and agree with this other person so therefore, we spent this other money on these other engineers. So I, I don't like the fact that people are telling me that I'm saying stuff that I'm not. I'm being inquisitive by asking the question with, uh, asking if we go out and we see other people back and forth and they, we have a, a, a cost because nobody does anything for free in 2020 because everybody's down. I wanna know, what is the price they gonna charge us to come back and tell us about the price that we have here? If you understand my questioning.
Yeah, Council President.
As Council President, I can just...
Council President, I wanna, uh, follow up on what you're saying because I think this is really important. We've spent an hour and a half talking about these different bids and estimates and prices, which I totally understand. Because from my experience, people come every day and say, "I can do this better. I can do this cheaper. I can do it a different way." And I am all for that. But I don't wanna spend a lot of money to find that out because in my, from my experience, if a person wants to show me that they can do it better, then show me. But I'm not paying you to show me that. And that's what I'm asking here, is what is the price when people say, "Let me get this guy and let me get this person, let me get this woman or person, whoever, to do it"? Really? Well, what's the price on that? At some point, we have to trust who we have in place and go with it rather than keep spending money because we can play this game all day long. We can do this forever. You know, I'm not really sure about this. We oughta go get another estimate. At some point, we are elected officials. You make a decision. Thank you, Council President.
Council President, you know, I, I would like to just, I would like to just say one thing here, you know? I heard a lot. That's the reason we have the employees. We have the director of the department out there. That's exactly the reason we have the mayor and administration and the bunch of employees working in the department. It's their job to make sure they find the right people and the right price to cut down the cost. Thank you.
Council President.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Brescher.
Yes, um, typically, just to answer Councilman Deal's question. Typically, your professional service contractors will give you a price. Um, they'll give you a price based on a percentage of the whole project or they'll give you a fixed price. And that price is typically free. So, right, I'm not asking to add cost to anything. And that's, that's my frustration, is I know that the administration, I know that Maureen knows that. Um, and I asked if we could get that price and it, it doesn't seem like the administration was willing to try and get that price, even though there would be no cost to the taxpayers. And the only holdup would be, would be maybe a month. You know, where, like I said, we've been waiting years for this. So I, I don't understand the push to push it right now. And, you know, when, when we can get a cheaper price and have it cost us nothing more.
Council President, I, I, I have a question.
Councilmember Gomez.
Hypothetically, we go out and we ask all these questions. Who then becomes the judge of who's the right fit to do the job? Because if we're criticizing Bob Smith that he doesn't know enough about it, then who ultimately takes the responsibility of doing the job? Because when the job goes wrong, I mean, plus the Bob Smith has been in the industry long enough to know whether he's being taken for a price or not. I'm not gonna know that. But I trust that he is. So ultimately, we go out, we price very easily. I'm sure that someone might be able to come in a little bit lower. But who makes the decision whether that's the right fit for the project? Is it us or is it the expert that we put in place to make that decision for us? But we're kinda changing that around a little bit now because we're saying, no, Bob, you don't know the price. Someone else can do it better. Someone else can do it cheaper. And that's the part that I'm figuring on. I'm open. I agree with Councilman Deal. I agree with, I think, a little bit of what everybody has said. If we could figure out a way to do it at the most cost-effective manner, we wanna do that. But to question the judgment of the people that we put in charge to make that choice or to guide us through that, then fundamentally, yeah, I do have a disagreement with that. So what we need to figure out is ultimately, who is going to make that responsibility? And that's unclear to me at this point. Thank you, Council President.
Council President.
Councilmember Patel.
Yeah, you know, Councilman Gomez, I completely understand, you know, where you're coming from. We are not saying Bob Smith, Mr. Bob Smith is not an expert. What we are saying is, Mr. Bob Smith has done enough due diligence in terms of seeking additional quotes, comparing the prices before putting this in front of this council. I'm not saying, you know, we are, any one of us are expert, but at least we are asking this question to the expert that if that person has done enough due diligence, shopping around, if there are enough information that he can provide to the council member to compare these vendors. Again, he wants to go with the, you know, the higher bidder. I don't think this council will have a problem if he feels that that vendor is a perfect fit. But we haven't seen any comparable data here. So what? That's my problem.
Council President.
Councilmember, uh, Coyle.
I, I promise I'm gonna wrap up here. I agree with Councilman Deal. He's been around the longest to, uh, and, and I understand the words he has mentioned. And I do agree with Councilman Gomez. I, I, I won't agree with Councilman Brescher, our administrator. Um, on that point, he made that she doesn't do any work. She's doing a, a good job. I think we, I think what he meant, what he meant to say, we've never asked her of this. I think if we ask Maureen of this, we'll get it. And I think the frustration between Councilman Brescher and I is we didn't ask her of this. So I, I'm not here to penalize her. I'm here to just try to get the best price of the township. I'm not here to say this is the best expert price. That will be up to the, the township. But we've never questioned Mott McDonald. And when it comes to Mr. Smith, he's, he's eight months on the job. I don't see him kicking the township around when he's eight months on the job. And, and I'm not saying his expertise isn't valid, but he inherited Mott McDonald. He didn't pick Mott McDonald. He inherited him like he inherited this, this beast of a problem. I'm just asking us to carefully, we're here to do policy and spending. That's our true job, to do policy and spending. I'm asking us the council just to relook at this and stop agreeing to just every price we get because, like, uh, one councilperson said, then why are we even meeting? We can just stamp the document. I'm, I'm talking about price. I know the work needs to be done. I just don't wanna pass everything that comes across my desk. This is $333,000. I don't even understand why it says 333. Why doesn't it say 334? It's just kind of an odd number they just picked. These are questions I have, Council President. They're fair for the taxpayers of Edison. We're here to protect them. All I ask is to question price. We can then make that decision with Bob Smith collectively together. He's the leader. I'm not saying he's not. But he inherited Mott McDonald. He didn't pick Mott McDonald.
You look at it, it, it could be less. It says not to exceed.
Right, Council President, Council President.
And one, one thing I just wanna say that, uh, everybody say they worry about the taxpayer and stuff. We've spent more time on sewer, I, I guess, than... Uh, every meeting is like four to five hours just on the sewer. And, you know? And as you know, people are telling me that you guys are going nowhere. You guys are just going back and forth with each other the whole time, so...
That's an exaggeration, four to five hours, Council President. It's a work session. It's an exaggeration, four to five hours. I wish you would be more specific.
Councilman Coyle, excuse me. This is not just tonight. Every time we meet, we go six hours on the same subject, okay? So, uh, don't act like it's just tonight.
This is, this is a work session, Council President. I thank you for having a work session, not a combined meeting for township residents. I, I, it tires me to see them wait to public speak. But this is the job we have. That's why we created work sessions. You know, there was a time when I was involved in the council 25 years ago. They didn't even have work sessions. So this is the purpose. The purpose is to sharpen our pencil. That's all I'm asking, Council President. It's what you signed up for.
Now, Council President, I'd just like to clarify, um, the comments. Oh, I, I'd just like to clarify the public, the, the comments that my council colleague made. Um, my frustration, I guess, comes from... I, I brought this issue up, uh, a few weeks ago. And I brought it up to the administration. Um, I spoke to Mr. Smith about it. I spoke to Maureen about it. Um, you know, no one's came to me and said, "Hey, what are your ideas?" Or, "What are your thoughts on this?" So when I bring up those concerns, I really expect my concerns to be dealt with before we get to this stage. Not that we feel that we can just put this up and just pass this. Um, so, so that's where my frustration lies. It wasn't like this was the first time that I brought this up. Uh, Maureen's well aware of it. Uh, Mr. Smith, we've had conversations about potentially maybe hiring someone as a better avenue. Um, so, so these discussions have been taking place. But now here it comes, and it's coming up on the agenda and it's coming up for a vote, okay? And we're not looking into getting the other pricing and we're not looking at potentially hiring someone. So all my concerns that I brought up basically fell on deaf ears. And to think that I would just sit here and, you know, go along with it is, is, is what my issue is. Um, so, so that's where I sit on it. You know, until the administration calls me and they say, "Hey Richie, look, here's a bunch of architects. You go call them." Um, you know, or they tell me that we got these pricings. I, I just don't feel comfortable because I know that we're being robbed. Um, this is what I did for a living. So to me, yes, I feel like I'm being robbed just to design it, you know, at, at this type of fee. Um, but you don't do that for a living. So I don't expect you to know that or, or a lot of my council colleagues, you know? But what I do expect is that support from my council colleagues and the respect that I do know what I'm talking about in the professional industry, that I do work. And for them to take that time to look at it, like Mr. Deal said, you know, if we can do this without an additional cost, he's 100% for it. So I appreciate that support of his. And I do hope that the administration reaches out, you know, and we actually do take a look at this. Thank you.
Yes, at all. And you know one thing? I just like, I, well, we just might look, uh, well, I thought we hired an expert. I thought that's what we got into doing the whole, but... Uh, and, and, uh, for somebody to make a comment that I just think that we got an open checkbook, that's, uh, that's ridiculous. You know what I mean? Making accusations against people and stuff that are not true. As I told everybody, uh, you know, speak, uh, the correct way to the council people. And you don't, you can be, you can respectfully disagree with somebody on their opinion, but you can't, you can't say that, that, that person is in another derogatory... Even if I don't agree with what somebody is saying, it's not my, it's not my fact to say that, oh, well, well, uh, Councilman Brescher thinks this and, you know, you don't, you don't, you don't think for me. If anybody ever go to court, you go there and the judge, they tell you that. So I'm like, I'm not the first person to tell you that. So I, I just wish the people to stick to the topic. If you don't like the way things, I, I'm okay with it, uh, Councilman Brescher. I'm okay with it, uh, Councilmember, uh, Patel and Councilman, uh, Deal and the rest of them. I'm okay with people displeasure with different things, back and forth. But, you know, you just state what you have to say because what I like, what's good about the whole council and everybody is that everybody's entitled to their opinion. Everybody can, uh, speak about it, but speak in terms that centralize on you and, and, and speak in terms of, this is why I am not okay with this. I respect people more because they give me their, because this is how they feel about it, point blank, without them giving me some side issue or whatever. If you tell me this is how I feel about it, I think I'm saving the taxpayer money, you're entitled to that. If I say this here, that I don't wanna keep on kicking the, the ball down the, down the street because, uh, then we'll wind up at election time and then we'll wind up with another whole big show, that's just, that's just my opinion at all. Because I'm not saying anybody's name or anything. I'm just saying, you know, I'm just, I take the time. And I'm also, but you guys, I get emails back and forth of the people who are discussing us doing six hours. They say, "Oh, I got off the line." Because you went six hours on something, never came to a conclusion, never said yay or nay, all right? The same thing, we're back at the point again. And all they're saying is, if you spend six hours, spend six hours again, I'm glad this is, um, I'm, I'm, I'm glad it's, it's two parts. But still, six hours is a lot of time for our people who have an agenda that has all these items on it. And we take and take up all their time and we don't give them a clear and concise reason of actually why we're doing that. They expected us and they expected the administration to hire an expert. And that came from the fact that they all came out to vote. More people came out to vote for the water than came out to vote for the, uh, primary. So we knew that the water thing was most important to our people. So I, for one, I am, I go out and I ask the different people and I ask them about the water. I check on the water. I read different things back and forth. I take my time and read them. I have, you know, great comprehension. And that's how I get my information and stuff back and forth on other things. My, I, I just said it and I'm not closing the door on other people like people tried to say. I'm not closing the door on other people, getting other people to come and examine to see if it's right or, or whatever. I'm, I myself, if I'm allowed to, I, I'm allowed to question the cost it will, will, will cost us to get more people in on the same information. That's all I do. I just question the cost. I didn't say yay or nay. I just questioning the cost. And I believe that I'm able to question costs. That's just my opinion. Thank you. So can we move on from there since we've over, overtalked that one? So from 15, from the Chief of Fire, A, B, and C. So from 15, from the Chief of Fire, A, B, and C. All right, moving right along.
Any comments on?
16, from the Township Clerk, A, B, and C. Is that the, the proposed ordinance? Is that the proposed ordinance? Or?
That's the initiative petition that was filed.
Okay.
So we'll have to have a special meeting for the public hearing. Planning to do it for probably August 12th.
Okay, it'll be for August 12th.
August 12th would be a special meeting for the, uh.
The only thing I can, the only thing, as I said, and I, as I discussed with Mr. Fravot Hill in person, that we can't even get together on water. So I, you know, for us to move all the way to energy and take on other big projects, I just hope that's, I, I would rather for the people to do it than for me to be the person that calls it for the people. You know, sure could be a good. But I'm, we spend so much time, we, we, we can't get past one thing, so we're, we're moving to another thing. If we could take care of, you know, things, that's, but that's just my opinion on, uh, C.
Council President.
Yes, Councilmember.
Yeah, I have a question to the clerk. Just wondering, how many signatures were there on this petition?
I think he submitted was like 1,900 and something. Can't help me, we're good. And stopped after we had the proper percentage.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
1,900.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll have that report. I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Council, Council President. Just while we're at. I have not seen our clerk on video. And how come we don't see our clerk? She's a part of our secretary of staff. I don't understand why the camera's not on her. I, I think it's almost rude. We've cut her out of the picture.
Yes.
I, I'd like to know what she has to say because she's quarterbacking half the things you discussed. And if she has an opinion, I want to hear it. She does direct us, all of us as a secretary.
She's not quarterbacking me, dear.
Well, if, if you look at the video camera, all you see is her passing information. I just want to be clear for the record. I, I just don't think it's a fair act to the council. If she's, if she's assisting, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to know what she's assisting with. She's all of our secretary. And all I see is her involved in your front desk. And the mic is off. It's a public meeting. Normally that would not be able to happen. I don't have any, I don't have anybody helping me. I just want to know. I don't think it's proper point of order.
Writing notes, sir. Excuse me, sir, but she's writing notes. Okay? She's writing notes.
I think the cam, I think the camera should be directed at her. She's a public servant. She's an elected official. She's part of our body. And I want to know what's going on there. It's fair to ask.
If I have any questions and I need somebody to quarterback me, I bet you it would probably be Bill Northgrave. Because then I would be able to get.
Council President, I'm just asking for Trent, I'm just asking for transparency. Okay? That's all I'm asking for. If she's sitting next to you and directing your agenda, I want to know, I want to hear what's going on.
Don't say she is. Stop lying. She's not directing me on any.
I'm just asking for the. I'm just, I'm just asking for the mic to be open and for her, and for her to see. Okay?
I specify the reading, okay?
She's a part of the meeting, she should be seen.
The only time she's a part of the meeting and when she gets to read the ordinances and when she reads the beginning, as far as the rest of the resolutions and stuff, she, all she can do is do a, a proper roll call. That's about it she can do. And if we get tired of trying to disparage me by saying I have to be quarterbacked by her, we can move on from the next, from the next thing from the council member of the planning board. That would be you, Councilmember Joe Coyle, do you have your report? I remember earlier I asked people to give me some reading reports.
I just, I just think you put her in a bad position. She's a neutral person. Either she is seen or you can't help but to make an accusation. I'm sorry.
Well, you know, with Joe, I, I, the thing that's so sad is that you'll say anything to get attention. And the thing that you'll say, you'll try to say something misogynistic, like she has no political aspirations whatsoever. I've been working with her for the longest. We never even discuss political stuff. All I ever discuss with her is what's going to be on this at all. She has no political ambitions whatsoever. She, her, and her job is just to fill in this stuff and I ask her what's on it. I take this straight up and I meet with the law. I don't meet with her because she can't do a resolution. She can't do ordinances. All these things and unfinished business, she can't do any of this stuff without the help of Bill Northgrave. So why would I be asking her to do things for me?
Council President, you've used the word misogynistic just now. Can you provide me details for our listeners to understand what I may have said wrong? Because I'll correct myself. Please direct me.
Because you're up there making up, you're making up, because you're trying to make me less of a person because I'm a woman and you keep trying to make me less by saying Cheryl's quarterbacking, Cheryl's doing your work for you. Cheryl's not in charge of this. When I, if you listen to me when I speak, I, Cheryl has nothing at all to do with what I'm saying at all, back and forth. And Cheryl has addressed that she doesn't want anything to do. She wants to just do her job and do her job the best that she can. So by you try to diminish me by saying that I need her for her to guide me and stuff, that's saying I'm a lesser. Whether you know it or not, hey, I'm a certified reading specialist. I have the comprehension skills. Well, I teach people how to do these things. I teach people how to read this stuff. That's what I do for a living. All right? So she doesn't have to explain anything to me because I, I, I don't know. I, I have this certificate and I have this, uh, uh, 100-page thesis that says I know how to read and I know how to comprehend. That's all I'm saying.
I don't, I don't question that, Council President. I know you have two master's degrees.
To make me less than who I am.
I, I respect your education. All I can tell you is what I'm seeing on the screen is a lot of quarterbacking. I'd like to be, to be transparent to the public what she's doing. That's all I'm asking, okay? I'll report on my council planning board.
Council President.
I just got. Yes, Council, Councilman Joe, she.
Yeah, just, can we move on?
Yes, we can. Yeah, because it's getting, I, I wanted, I wanted Councilmember, uh, Coyle to report on the planning board, but he's more interested in not doing that, I guess.
Council President, I'd be delighted to do that for the council. We met last Monday through Zoom. The first item on the agenda was a resolution for a subdivision with federal business centers, which was approved. The second item, I'm sorry, but our connection was not proper. So the second item was a subdivision on Lafayette. I did not hear the entire application from what's been told to me. On Lafayette Street here in Edison, there was a marriage of two properties from a homeowner. So a resolution was put together so those properties can be contiguous. The third application was Markham Development, which was a six lot conforming subdivision from the direction of our attorney and the members of the planning were an experts. There was absolutely no variances on this. It was unanimously approved due to the no variances in conforming subdivision. Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Now unfinished business, ordinances for further consideration on a public hearing for final adoption. Do you read an ordinance?
No, I don't read.
All right, okay. Oh, it's O, it's O two, O zero two, 2020. Ordinance amending the township code, Chapter seven, Section 714 to prohibit parking on a portion of national road within the township at all times. As I told you before, and I told you guys earlier, that was something that I, I worked out with the veterans on Veterans Day. We happened to discuss it. We happened to discuss that in front of you. So I don't want nobody to say they don't, they don't actually know what that is. That's why I'm repeating it again. Now we have discussion items. Okay, I don't have any discussion items because I'm, I'm exhausted from talking so much. All right, Councilmember Brescher.
Uh, I have nothing. No, I've said everything tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Coyle.
Uh, thank.
Councilmember Deal.
Thank you, Council President. First, I just want to thank the administration and the cooperation of different projects. They're reviewing for beautification throughout the town, including looking at parks. I've had a very good opportunity with Mayor Tom Lenke and Maureen through beautification in our parks and different things going out throughout the town. To the administration for engineer, I had a question on Admin Street. Again, Mrs. Speerak has sent another correspondent in regards to the entryway, making it a one-way. From what her stance is, we're waiting for a resolution and agreement to the DOT that we could make this a one-way. That neighborhood has been putting up with tractor trailers coming down their block in a residential area because of the GPS mapping for over a year now. She's brought this to our attention and still we have not made progress. Can I get a status through engineering on that?
Yes, Councilman, we had an appointment with the DOT scheduled for July 10th. And because of furloughs, it was canceled by the DOT. We were told to contact the DOT to reschedule it in the beginning of August. We are hoping to have that meeting in September.
Okay, I just, you know, to the engineer, I, I think the public's waited a long time. I, I, I don't believe this, from what we're hearing, is a difficult process. It's whether they agree to us doing a resolution that we are satisfied at our end and we can move forward. I, I'm, I'm disturbed that the DOT can't meet through Zoom or something. I mean, I don't know where the pressure is through the administration, Maureen, but we've been waiting 15 months for a simple 15-minute meeting.
We did, we had a meeting, we had a meeting all set up. They canceled it, so.
Can I be provided with the names of who is not meeting with us?
Yep.
We have a speaker who is from our county, Speaker Coughlin. I think it's time to reach out to his office and ask why we're not getting a meeting. It's just important that we put some pressure. This is not a detailed discussion. It's just, it came from them to tell us, we just need a resolution. And it's been standing still. So I do appreciate that. Thank you. The other subject I had was a complaint from Doug Way, 3889 Park Avenue. Has there been any progress on that?
Yes, we, we issued, we're actually, the zoning officer issued a summons regarding that property in question for them to stop work. And that, that was submitted to them, I believe it was Saturday.
Okay. And I just want to bring up a point. And some days I hear a lot of complaints from different residents. And I would hope that we're not making this mistake in the planning side of our development. But when you take a neighborhood who has an equilibrium of topography and essentially their homes all built in the same area of the woods, and we decide to allow a foundation line to be four feet higher than the average foundation line. If that's the issue that's happening in and around those areas, I would hope that we can stop that from happening. If it's not a legitimate complaint, I'm open to listen to that. But I've heard, in addition to his complaint, I'm hearing complaints from neighbors around that area. And I've witnessed one of the homes that were built around there. And essentially the foundation, and if people understand what I'm describing that are listening, the foundation line is your basement height of your property. Where your, where your dirt meets the street and where your dirt meets the foundation of your property basement line. If your neighbor is three feet lower than you are, that's a huge problem of drainage. And I would hope that engineering is accounting the equilibrium homes in and around that neighborhood, that we stay at a basement height that's reasonable. And what I think that could be happening is some builders are taking the greedy route of wanting to have a higher basement ceiling height, which is natural in the economy to be able to have a nice tall basement ceiling. But they're taking that at the expense of the neighboring properties. So I hope this council takes a direct look at properties that are doing that because they should not get their bond money back and they should not be allowed to have a basement, a basement height, foundation height, that's higher than the equilibrium of property in the topography of that neighborhood. Do you have any comments on that through engineering? Did I lose Mike?
I don't see him.
I'll move on to my next subject. Council President, if I can go back to that when he returns, I will. Council President, the county has received close to $140 million in COVID money to spread throughout the towns in our county. I'm asking our council to draft a letter through our attorney requesting a breakdown of how that money will be allocated, what the application process is, and where we qualify. I'm also asking our administration to take part in freeholder council meetings to make requests and ask questions where that money will be spent. I'd hate to see us miss the boat on making a request for an opportunity where we kind of set the largest sailboat in the community of business. 7,000 businesses in Edison throughout the county, we're the fifth largest municipality in the state. We deserve a piece of that money and we need to start asking for that now. To the administration, are we going to take any actions with the freeholders in the county to get part of that money?
Yes, we're working on that right now. We're going to be submitting applications probably this Wednesday. Monies for this period is from March 12th to May 31st.
Okay, and have they?
That $140 million is slated to go to the municipalities themselves. I don't, I don't know if any monies that can go to the businesses for that.
That's, that's perfectly fine. As, as long as the township receives the inherent benefit in what it's allocated and permitted for, you'll distribute it at the proper direction of the monies. I'm just, I'm challenged to not see the application process, the criteria for this. And if you can share that with me, I'd like to see a file of correspondence to the freeholders or, or to John Palomino, the finance director. I want to make sure we take a strong leap into this to make sure we get our fair share.
Yeah, I can get Ken to get you the criteria, but the council was gracious enough to hire a consultant firm to work on this. We work on this every day. We will get every dime that's owed to us that they prove.
We hired the Bolton firm? I'm sorry, Maureen?
You, we hired a consultant firm. It was Millennium to work with us on this.
Okay, so there's a direct person.
Yes.
Negotiating, okay. I, I just, I'd like to be a part of the file and, and the transparency of what our actions are. And I just don't want to see us miss an opportunity because we are extremely busy in the administration, but this is $140 million.
Yeah, we're not going to miss any opportunity. That's, that's what we work on every week.
Okay. And also, I guess, to, to the chief for community policing, he does not have the answer, but through the administration, I'd like to request some neighborhood watch, open forums in, in some neighborhoods. We've had some opportunities with Lieutenant Dudash. I think it's perfect timing to continue some of them through, if they're not scheduled already. I'd like to see some schedules for the month of August throughout the town, as we did in the past. That's all I have, Council President. I want to thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Deal.
Thank you, Council President. I want to follow up on Councilman Coyle's point about elevations with buildings. It's important as we continue to have people build in the town that we make sure that the neighbors in that area are not negatively impacted. That's very important. We had the story of a resident come by. We spent about a year and a half on it. I think we still may be dealing with it. Where he said they built up the property next to him so high that when he stood on his grass, the property next to him came up to his chest. I mean, you know, that was, and I, we looked at that and that was true. We need, as we move forward and build in our township, which is understandable, we build in our township, that we make sure that the neighbors are not negatively impacted. So I appreciate that. Now, the other thing too, along those points, I'm not going, I apologize for not getting to our department earlier this week, but if somebody could give me an answer on our status with the swell that we worked on between Abbott and Calvert. We, we talked about it for a long time. There was a swell that was going to be built. There was some construction that was going to be done. Or if somebody could give me a call on the next day or two, just kind of give me an update on where we are with that. I want to follow up. One of the things that has happened through the pandemic is we've changed a lot. Certainly our lives changed quickly and unexpectedly. So we're dealing with things in a different way, but I don't want to lose necessarily momentum with some of the things we have going forward. That swell on Calvert and Abbott was something we were looking to bring closure to. If somebody could give me a call, I would appreciate it. I want to thank the Beautification Committee for the work they're doing. I want to tell you that those underpasses by, on Route one and Amboy, beautiful job on that. Looked absolutely beautiful. Amboy is looking really nice. And that was the goal years ago, and, and I applaud the Beautification Committee, Joe Coyle and company for putting that together. It's really looking good. Thank you. I want to read a letter here. It's, I'm only going to read about two paragraphs of it. It's from our Open Space Committee. I think all the council members got it. But it says, "In the 2018 Edison Open Space and Recreation Plan Update, the Edison Open Space Advisory Committee Suggested Identifying Sites for Community Gardens in Edison." I know our council president brought that up earlier tonight. In 2020, we have approached, we were, have been approached by the Edison Community Garden Initiative. They go by the initials ECGI, asking if there was any public land available for community gardens. ECGI suggested a number of sites and the committee came. gardens. ECGI suggested a number of sites, and the committee came up with additional sites. The committee feels that a site of Papiante Park is best for a community garden. The area is east of the 9/11 Memorial, is mostly flat and open. A large garden would fit in this area. There is a water line to the 9/11 fountain nearby. The site has ample parking. Currently, the site is not being used for any sports. It is also centrally located." I spoke with Walt Social, the chairman of the Open Space Advisory Committee this week, because I wanted to talk about this. Going back almost 20 years, when we wanted to find a site for the 9/11 memorial, we looked for a place that was centrally located, had ample parking, a place near a park that was scenic and beautiful. And I think everyone will agree, that project came out very nicely. It's been appreciated by the community for a long time and will continue to be that way. If you look to the left of that monument, there is a space that they're talking about, the Open Space Advisory Committee. It's to the left of the monument. It does make sense, looking at the different sites proposed, that this would be a site that may work. It's large, it's flat, it's up there, it's not being used. I don't see it being used. I can't remember the last time it was used at all. And what has been proposed is a large community garden that would be worked, where some of the food that would be produced in the garden would actually be donated to our food pantry. So I think it's a win-win situation. Walter and I talked about the beautification of that, in addition to the maintenance, which I was very concerned with. Whenever you build a garden, it looks nice when it's in full bloom, it doesn't look so nice in the wintertime. So in addition to the maintenance of the garden, excuse me, Walter and I spoke about beautifying the area completely. So if we had the garden at the top of the berm, on top, on the flat area, you know, could we plant the flowers or things around it to make it a very beautiful thing? I mean, if you look at the underpasses on Amboy Avenue, and you look at the 9/11 memorial project set of work, you can take a community garden, a large community garden, put it on that site, because it does have the water. If we have the manpower, if we have the people power to maintain it and create it, it can really be a jewel, and it's something that I'm going to suggest that we move ahead with. I'm going to contact, to contact person with the ECGI and talk more about it, but it is, what we talk about, we've talked about a lot of things tonight, and a lot of it has been different points of view. This is a win-win. I see nothing but beauty in this. Again, if we can produce a lot of food for the food pantry, how wonderful a project is this, right next to our other great project, the 9/11 memorial. I want to end my council comments by saying this. I've been privileged to be council president many times in my career, and I was privileged to work with three different municipal clerks, and I can't tell you how much I appreciated their work and their efforts. I worked with three different municipal clerks, and they were all terrific. The job they do is very, very difficult, because they don't quarterback you, they assist you, they are your co-pilot, when you are in a situation where you are answering a thousand different questions from the community. Any question about our 100,000-person community comes up in those public meetings, where you as council president are trying to maintain the meeting, move the meeting ahead. That person next to you is essential and very important, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate, and I'll say it because Cheryl Russo-Mano is on the line tonight, how much I appreciated Cheryl Russo-Mano working with me, Robin, everyone who was working with me, going all the way back. These people do a terrific job, because again, we are dealing with the residents, we're dealing with the different departments. You as a single person cannot answer every question that comes spontaneously to you, and you need to go to these different people, Renee, Robin, and Cheryl, the people I worked with over the past 20 years. I want to thank you and tell you how essential you are, and I know how hard you work, because you're under a great deal of pressure to come up with that answer right now. Why? Because the public is watching, the public wants an answer, and we need to answer that question right now. We need to, at the best we can, help our residents understand. So thank you, and I just wanted to share that aspect of it. And I know if anyone who hasn't been council president will become council president in the future sometime, you will see what I'm talking about. That co-pilot of yours is essential, very important, and very much appreciated. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Maureen, just a quick follow-up question in regards to the county funds. Is that, the basis of the application is reimbursements?
Yes.
Right, okay. So that's what Millennium is working on then?
Correct.
Okay.
The county funds and FEMA funds.
Okay, okay, so it's everything incurred from March through May 31st, right?
Correct. That's the first round.
Okay, thank you. Council President, if I may ask, for Wednesday, I know we had audio issues at the beginning of the meeting. If we can, through a moment of silence, for one of our longtime employees, I believe 38 years, he was with the township, Bobby Campbell passed away a few days ago, and we want to just take a moment to thank him for his years of service, I believe he was 38, and really, a person thoughts, or with his family, and many friends that he had in the township. We're sad to see him go, but if we could just remember him on Wednesday. So that's all I got, Council President.
Because I had mentioned it to my assistant, I had mentioned it, and we think Wednesday would be that good time for us, under council president's remarks at that time. Thanks a lot, you know, but I had already had the ball rolling for this Wednesday, the information they given out. Thank you so much.
Perfect, thank you.
Are you finished, Councilmember Gomez?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Joshi?
Mr. President, there's a couple items that I wanted to discuss. The first being, there is an Assembly Bill, Assembly Bill 3386, that I would like to see us, the council, vote on, a resolution in support of it. What it is, is a resolution, or a law from Trenton that would permit municipalities to have a residency requirement for new hires within the fire and police department. I've spoken about this pretty extensively multiple times each year that I've been on the council, and I do believe that a measure such as this would build a stronger community, and I would like to see us discuss it, or just show our support for this resolution, if we can discuss it for next meeting. Next, I wanted to ask Maureen, or an engineer, what's the process of when a utility company comes in, or when someone comes in, rips up the street, who checks on whether they've done curb-to-curb or not? Because that's what our ordinance says, and I've seen on multiple occasions where we have an ordinance in place that says that they have to pave curb-to-curb, but I'm not sure that that's being enforced. So who follows up and makes sure that that happens?
That's the engineering department. Mike, are you on?
Yes, I'm on, and typically, a road opening permit is applied for, by the utility, or the developer, whoever the case may be, and the restoration requirements are outlined in that permit, and the bond is applied for, and it's not released until the restoration is completed in accordance with the ordinance.
Okay, so I've been to multiple streets where I've seen this. Maureen, I've brought it up to you a couple of times, just different ones, but I've gone there, I've measured it. It's way off. The streets are imbalanced, and I don't know why, I don't know why there's no follow-up on it. Like, I honestly, from the way that I see it, is when a utility company, or when someone rips up the street, we should be out there, as soon as they claim that they're done, fact-check them, and if they're not, make sure they get to it right away. Because now we have streets that are just, I mean, we spend money paving them, and then they get ripped up, and they're just not done again. It doesn't make any sense to me. Like, how many people are there? In a given day, there are utility companies, or people are ripping up streets on any given day, and how many people are actually going out, making sure in a week, that the work has been done from curb-to-curb?
It depends on the week, you know, as projects come to a close and they request the bond release.
So how many bond releases have we had on just specifically for streets that need to be repaired in the last month? This is the high time where it would need to be done.
I would have to get back to you with that.
Okay, well, here's all I'll do. I will send you a list of streets that have not been done, and I know that I've gotten responses back saying that they're less than an inch, they're not. I'll go measure it out, and I will ask you to make sure that that is enforced, and the streets are done curb-to-curb. The other thing is related to Amazon. We hired a contractor for sound. Where is that report for that neighborhood?
Councilman, actually, on tonight's agenda is an additional $5,000 to do more studies. They've been out there a couple of different times. The first night, it was a relatively quiet night. The second night, they were, you know, they've been meeting with residents, they've been garnering information as to what the different sounds that they're experiencing, but the need is to do more testing out there. So they're actively conducting more testing, but they're actively also having dialogue with the affected residents. So once that report is done, you know, it'll be forthcoming to council.
So do you have, do you know, can we see the report so far?
It has not been provided to me. I'll make a request tomorrow. I know that the report back to us is that they were out two different, on two different evenings. The first evening, you know, we actually scheduled it with the neighbors, so the neighbors were, you know, physically out in the yard with them. The second night, on purpose, they actually picked a night that they came unannounced to make sure that there was, there was no discrepancy in case we need to do enforcement, that we effectively just did this on a routine night, if you will. And so that's the only, that's the report I've gotten back so far, you know, from them. I don't have, I don't have numbers from them. However, the reason I don't have numbers is because they've been relatively uneventful so far from a noise perspective for enforcement.
Where, do you know where they're located? Or where is the person that is doing the study standing? Because I've been there.
They, like, I put together all the neighbors that were affected by this councilment, and we physically had a Zoom meeting prior to this, and then we--
With the neighbors?
Yes, yes. So they are all actively involved in this. Now, they were in the yard with us. We did a Zoom meeting before the first readings were taken, and then in turn, so that they've been actively involved, it's been in their yards. So they know exactly where to go. I purposely put together a, you know, group of neighbors to make sure that they're active, and act, you know, part of the dialogue here. So we're not, we're not kind of going in and saying, here's what we found, and tell them about it afterwards. They're a part, they're a part of the team.
Okay, because I've been there, at this point, I've been there at least four times, random nights, middle of the week, on weekends, and I could tell you, if I did a Facebook Live, standing anywhere on those side of the streets, you can hear the excessively dramatic sounds that are coming constantly. It's just like every, every few minutes.
And I think, I think what the consultants were trying to do, Councilmen, is they're trying to diagnose, so they can, on our behalf, with us, and with the neighbors, can sit down with Amazon and fix the problems, because what they're trying to diagnose is what, what is, you know, I mean, we know when somebody picks up a dumpster, we know what that is. When the cardboard recycling, we know what that is, but there's other programmatic things with just dropping the lift gates and some other things. They're trying to get a pattern there, is to say, you know, what is consistently something that they could re-engineer, or they could change the scheduling or whatever. That's what they're, in the conversations that they've had with me and with the, and with the neighbors on our behalf, is what they're looking to do is to find something where they can go in and literally fix the problem, as opposed to, you know, as opposed to just writing a ticket.
It's the, it's the beeping, in my opinion, obviously, in my opinion, the beeping is what is, was the toughest to hear. And I remember, some nights, I've actually, when I go for my walks, I've actually walked in that neighborhood at midnight through 1:00, and I've heard it myself. It's from 12:00 to 1:00, you just hear beeping, and it's very loud. It's not, I mean, there's no exaggeration to it.
No, no.
Yeah.
And that was a part of it. There's also some impact noises. I think the, obviously, impact from the dumpsters or recycling, but there's some impact noises that they think they may be able to alleviate with some of the lift gates, and that's why we brought them on board. They've had some experience dealing with industries like this, and with the adjoining neighbors, and so they're, they're trying to apply that now, to see where some of the experiences that they've had may be similar to what that was going on at Amazon.
Do you think the 5,000 will cover the remaining amount of, or do you think the 5,000 is enough to finish the study? I just don't want a scenario where it's not enough, and then we have to wait another month, you know?
Apparently, according to, again, when they came back to us, they seemed to be confident that they could put something together, you know, with that, with the additional funds that they requested.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Council President? Council President?
Can you wait till I do everybody first, please, then I'll come back to you?
Sure, sure, I just wanted to piggyback on--
Councilmember Patel?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
All right. All right, go ahead, Councilman Coyle.
Council President, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on what Councilman Joshi said in regards to the road openings. At an earlier council meeting, I brought up to the administration, will we return bond money? I was asking if we require a photograph of the completed work, and I definitely understand Sam's comment, because you have a lot of misunderstandings when roads are opened, then we have a misunderstanding of when the timeline of the season to seal the road and have the pavement adjust perfectly in its cut. But I have brought to the council's attention before that I don't see how difficult it would be that if the applicant is required to fill out paperwork to open up the street, and at any given time, they have this gap of when they can open it up. Can you hear me, Council President?
Yeah, but Councilmember Joseph Coyle, you have pictures in your packet.
Okay, so, okay, well, thank you. Well, the thing is, is to Councilman Joshi's--
And they also were emailed to you also.
Well, thank you. Well, the discussion I have with Councilman Joshi now is that, is this going to be a requirement now, every time that part of their application to be approved, is photos are provided to the engineering? Because if they're, is that it, Maureen?
Yeah, and they actually physically go out and do inspection. I'm just providing the pictures to the council.
Okay, no, okay, so then, I appreciate that. I just wanted to piggyback on Sam's comment, because I'm glad we see eye to eye on this, and I'm happy to see we're now providing photographs, which is, which is wonderful. But it also gives the residents the opportunity to know that this council is just not approving and giving bond money back. It's, we see the actual photograph. I don't think Councilman Joshi can get a measurement from a photograph, but obviously, we can get some sightline of understanding of how much of the street was ripped up, and how much was paved. I'm sorry, Council President, I didn't see that in my packet. If you could provide me that email, I'll certainly look at it, but I don't have it in my packet. But thank you very much. Wonderful job. Thank you to the administration. I also want to share that I've been in front of Amazon, who is absolutely doing a terrible job with sound. This subject's gone up at least 12 different times at council meetings. I sat out there in my car several times for four hours, listening to the noise. Most of the noise, you don't have to be-- Most of the noise, you don't have to be an expert to figure out where the noise is coming from. It's the obvious that Jay Elliott just mentioned. It's the, it's the switcher who switches the 1,000 straight jobs they push in and out of there. And that switcher drives this little cab, mini cab, and moves tractor trailers around. They have them double-stacked, and when he bangs against the, the back opening door, that's the noise. When the lift gate drops down, that's the noise. And when he sets down the actual tractor, tr, tractor, I'm sorry, the actual 60-foot tractor, he drops it. They are the four noises that are the most difficult, that are happening. That's all they have to do, is have a better switcher that has an orchestration of care. That's their biggest problem. It's the person who sets down the, the gate that attaches to get into the, into the, into the, into the tractor, that they slam that down and they don't care. So if the people who work there handle those three jobs appropriately, it would cut down the noise by 50%. Now, the alarm is just Councilman Joshi's issue. That's something I may or may not be able to control because of the sound and requirements of public safety and OSHA, but it's, it's, it's overboard. So I agree with Councilman Sam Joshi, and many councilmen on this, including Bob Deal. We've been over this, we've been up and down. It's, it's tiring that Amazon, not only are, they are a non-union shop that hires labor and works them overboard. They make them move 200 packages an hour. It's ridiculous what they do to their staff. I don't, I don't believe in a lot of practices they have there that I hear about, and it's sad what I see and read on Facebook about Amazon, but I wish they were a good partner to Edison, because it's said that they're in Edison, they're not a good partner in several towns in this state, and Amazon has not been good to Edison at all. They came here, they do very well, very well in profits, and they forget about the neighbors around there. And frankly, I'm just tired of hearing it. I'm looking forward to Councilman Sam Joshi taking the lead with Councilman Bob Deal, and truly hammering down on this noise, because I think we wore out the, one of the, or two of the neighbors, and they're just tired. They're coming here and not getting results. And it's, it's about time they've just become a partner in caring for the people around them. I'm sad to see we're still going through this. Thank you, Council President.
I just wanted to make an announcement of some people around the, the senior citizen building is not technically open, but it is a cool, a cooling station, and although not open to the public, at the senior city, the senior center at 2963 Woodbridge Avenue. It will be open from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, as a cooling center. As you know, the temperatures this week in our heat wave, some have risen past 105 degrees. So, but you are required to wear face masks, you mustn't do all the precautions that you normally would do, and you will have your temperature taken, along with providing contact information. And please contact the office at 732-248-7345 for further information. I thought that was very important, because at this rate here, and at the amount of heat that we're experiencing each day, I think it's nice that our mayor, Thomas Lenke, is providing the cooling station for our residents at all. So at this particular time, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Oh, excuse me, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I have to explain to everyone first that when we have a work session, which I know we've had double sessions less lately, if you don't speak in the beginning, you will not be allowed to speak. So we will be back here on Wednesday, which will be our regular meeting, so you will be able to speak at that time. I don't want you to think we're being rude or anything, but that's how it is. All right? Now, sorry. Go ahead. Entertain a motion for adjournment. That was--
Go move.
Second.
All right. Everybody in favor? Yeah. Good night. Night, everybody.